We are completing the April 2nd, you Urban Renewal Agency meeting. We have citizen input and community announcements is first on the agenda. I have one card. Do we have anybody online, Maya? Okay, Mr. Don Perman, you're up.
Thank you. Obviously, this project is in its second round.
Okay, hold on, I'm so sorry. Are you speaking to the agenda item?
Correct, Urban Renewal Project Number 25-001.
Okay, let's do the consent agenda first. Hold please, you may have a seat, we're gonna just bump you, you can sit right there, cuz I'm gonna call right on you again. But being that you were gonna speak to the resolution on the agenda, not a non-agenda item, I just wanna put it in order. So, I will, we'll do the consent agenda and then we'll move back to Dr. Perman.
I approve, sorry, I move to approve the consent agenda which include the minutes of the March 5th, 2025 Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Hodson and seconded by Commissioner Davis to approve the consent agenda that includes the minutes from the March 5th, 2025 Urban Renewal Agency meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 25001, and apparently, this is what Mr. Perman wants to address us about, so go ahead. Florence Sharps.
Were there any public notice on this project to the surrounding properties of this project?
Eileen.
Hi, I'm gonna let Jerry answer this question.
Yes, it was advertised in the David General Conference and advertised on the city website.
But no letters to surrounding properties discussing the influence on the logging road of those that are working next door to logging road in that area. No, no public notice.
Public notice was made, Eileen, is that proper protocol, or Emily, can you answer to that? Is that a step that should've been taken?
Not off the top of my head, but I'm happy to look into it if you would like me to.
Oftentimes, public notice letters are written to surrounding properties when projects are being proposed. Is that not true?
Well, there have been multiple projects that we have advertised here recently, and to my understanding, we have not issued public notice on any of them.
It depends on the size of the project and what it does to the planning department, what type of review it's in plan, whether it's required to have public notice requirements or not. This was a Type 1, maybe they do not require that type of public notice.
Yeah, cuz usually, it's the Type 2 that require a public notice of X amount of feet around the site of that's being constructed, yeah.
So, this particular project doesn't fall within those parameters?
Okay, correct. So, it's a good thing I was paying attention to some things being proposed in construction, because I've been proposing something for eight years to resolve issues on that south side, and I've had issues with people crossing across a railroad track to the apartments in Fred Meyer for the last 15 years. Yes, this is a very nice project, and I'm grateful that we're gonna do this, but you're gonna increase the traffic on Third Court. We're already having problems, we've been having problems for 17 years when I built Third Court. Cars parked in private parking lots just today, a stroller tomorrow, going to my parking lot, to Third Court, through another personal parking lot to get to the logging road, and then come back and get a car that's parked in a private parking lot.
Parking your-
There's no public parking on the south side of town, and if you build this, this is a great access, and it should be, because, yeah, we're ruining the fences around the apartments, you're ruining the fences, keeping people from going across the dangerous tracks when their trains are running. I understand, I've been asking that for years. And finally, we do get a pathway, but you know what? Third Court's gonna be used, and our parking, personal parking lots are gonna continue to be used as they've been for the last 15 years, for people who wanna walk and use that path and go around to Fred Meyer. It's a great safety avenue, I think it's great, but it's not resolving an issue that I've been discussing almost every year for the last eight years, that we have no public parking on the south side of town. We can go clear out the 13th Avenue, but then you gotta backtrack back to 10th Avenue, and then you gotta find the road that you can park at to get to the park, and then you finally get to the logging road. That's why Third Court is used all the time by people that drive cars. I made this point out eight years ago. Cars are what is accessing Third Court. We have three different walking paths, we have different biking paths, that was what was discussed, that's, that's how the city said, well, there's enough access, you know, it's no problem. Well, the problem is, it's not the walking, it's not the biking, it's not the strollers necessarily, it's the cars that use our private parking lots. There is no public parking on the south side of town. You cannot park in industrial areas, you cannot park in the schools, you cannot park, there's no public parking lot in the neighborhoods. So, that's when I came up with the idea, you know, we got several cars in the, we can take one of these lots and convert it to public parking. It's a very simple, common sense, easy to do, and not very expensive. And fourth, Emily, still, a couple lots available, one near the walking path and a corner one that's up against the logging road, that would work very well for public parking, for the many cars that are there now, and this pathway is only going to increase that number, because that's where people go to get to the logging road on the south side of town by car. And I can prove it to you with pictures, I can prove it to you with video, I can prove it to you, the many people that use it every day and park in the cul-de-sac because there is no public parking. And I got testimony this week from Dr. Warren's office in our office, we deal with people that wanna go to the bathroom and use our bathroom, we've got people that wanna drink, we don't mind doing it, but there isn't nothing there, and that's the easiest access point, Third Court. That was never discussed 17 years ago, how easy and what it would do for this side. But it's a reality, especially in the last 10 years, that it's a very easy access point by car. And I've tried to work with the city, and I've tried to put proposals together, and I've tried to say, look, I think this road is not just used by the people that come to my office or go to Dr. Warren, and now there's another office gonna be built, and now there's an eye doctor that wants to build a 5,000 square foot facility out there. So, it may have taken some time, but you have to understand, I developed CCNRs, because we were there to serve the public. These were service businesses that I wanted to make sure was there, not some guy that buys a lot because it was for sale and then wanted to do a pull line, so that's not, that's not what that's for. That's what we developed over there, because there was nothing on this side of town for commercial building development, professional office space that we're using to serve the public. So, that was developed because we needed expansion of professional office space so that we could better serve the public here. And that's what I tell with this land guy that just bought, you know, a couple of years ago, he said, you're not breaking the CCNRs. It was tightly developed so that we keep it so people are served and we serve the public. I've been serving the public for 32 years here.
Mr. Perman, we need to wrap you up, we're past three minutes, I'm sorry the timer wasn't on till we alert you.
But thank you for your time, but I'm just telling you, I think it's a great project, but I think we have to follow that with the project that I've been proposing for years, so that we deal with the traffic that's on Third Court because of its ease of access and its ideal location for the community on the south side.
Thank you.
So, I've got, I just want a commitment from the board, that we're gonna have more discussion about this, whether it's an urban meeting, whether it's a city council meeting, whether it's a meeting, I would like a vote tonight that we move forward on at least having further discussion of this project.
We can't really put it to a vote, as we haven't noticed this is an unvotable item, but we have taken note, and Council Pat, or Commissioner Patton has a notation he'd like to make.
Yeah, I just have a clarifying question. I guess for me, I'm confused, is the concern that rather than people driving to Fred Meyer or anybody in the Fred Meyer Plaza to do their business, would instead drive to Mr. Perman's location, park their vehicle, walk down the logging road, access Fred Meyer to do their business, then walk back up the logging road to get to their car?
That's a fair question.
That's what they do, you watch and see grocery sacks coming my way, that's, that's a common occurrence.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
That's been going on for years.
I just was curious as to if that's where we were going with that.
Okay.
But Chair Andley, I believe that this is not an Urban Renewal District piece, this is more of a city council issue.
I would agree.
And so, I think if anything, the, this body needs to bump it to the city council and have them-
The chair has noted that, and I will refer it to the mayor. So, we will, do we have consensus that this is a city council issue? Okay, one more question, yes?
Well, and I will just say, I have tried to engage in a conversation regarding ways of remediating this problem, but have been able to get nowhere with it, so I'm hoping that if we go, if we go down this path, that the ideas that I have put forward will be considered and vetted, and so that way, because I had let Mr. Per, or Dr. Perman know some time ago that when he approached me about this, that I would take this seriously and do some research into it, and in my efforts to do this, I have been thwarted. So, I would, I hope that this will yield some sort of result.
Okay.
And I've had long discussions with Jerry, and I've had long discussions with several of the agencies that have used my road for the last 15 years. And so, yes, I would like further discussion, I had the road analyzed, I sent that to the, you guys to see that it's a well, well-built road, and it's an issue that Jerry says it's a very adequate road, and I support the fact that we, yes, have been using it all these years.
Okay, well, as we said, it's not, it's not an agency issue, it's a council issue, so the mayor and the city administrator will work on a future work session date.
That's great, I came just to say, it's a great project you guys are doing, but you gotta follow up, because it's gonna change the traffic at Red Village that I developed, and I've had problems with the last 15 years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perman. Next on the agenda is Resolution 25001, so Eileen, you want to present this item, please?
I'm gonna call Jerry up, this is the consideration of a resolution authorizing the Urban Renewal Director to execute a contract with KNL.
Jamie Stickle, Economics Development Director.
Cherry Nelson, Canby Public Works Director.
So, before you tonight is the project for the pathway to connect the logging trail to Highway 99. This project was identified in 2021 as a project that the Urban Renewal Agency wanted to see come forward, and then confirmed at the beginning of this year. Over the years, the project has included everything from the beautification of the whole bridge to that end pathway, and it was decided to move forward with a pathway which really focuses on enhancing the safety of the connection, because people traverse the, the Union Pacific, I'm sorry, the Oregon Pacific Railroad. This project will bring forward 425 feet of path between the logging bridge trail and Highway 99 with a retaining wall, fencing, and the project, it better connects the North Canby Community to the Fred Meyer Complex. Again, it addresses those safety concerns. The city received 15 proposals. KNL Industries was the low bid with $234,390. The contractor will oversee the construction along with the coordination with the rail and ODOP. Is there anything that I have missed?
You covered it, Jamie, yep.
And as Eileen mentioned before you tonight is the Resolution 25001, and it is recommended that you move forward with this resolution.
Any questions for staff? Councilor, Commissioner Sterns.
If we were to approve this, what's the time scale about installation of the path? Like, how long does it take to do it?
We gotta, once we get the contract executed, which hopefully, we have done within a couple weeks, they get working within three weeks and have a probably 120 days to complete the project.
Okay, so something like July or August?
Yeah, and it seems pretty cut and dry, they're not pouring a lot of concrete, they're bringing in blocks for the wall, the fencing, so it's not like they have to wait on cure time or anything. Asphalt path, pretty straightforward, fun, easy project, so it should go really fast and smooth, so hopefully to have it in, just complete this budget cycle.
And just to remind everybody watching the 230, is that under budget, over budget, or is the funds there for that?
It was budgeted at 500 and, just over 500,000, so yeah, we're under 562, so we're under budget.
Mr. Patton.
So, I can't remember if I saw anything in there about this, is there lighting going to be on this path?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, great.
We're gonna put, basically, since it's a public works project, it'll be kinda look like our street lighting, overhead lighting, and we actually are gonna run extra conduits, so if we ever wanted to go further, we could go further if we wanted in the future.
Okay, great.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I'll tell you, I'll maybe-
Mike.
Wow.
Mike, and get your words.
I move to approve Resolution Number 25-001, authorizing the Urban Renewal District, or sorry, Urban Renewal Director to execute a contract with KNL Industries in the amount of $234,390 for construction of new walking path connecting the logging, logging road trail path with Highway 99E.
Second.
Motion's been made by Vice Chair Hodson and seconded by Commissioner Patton to approve Resolution Number 25001, authorizing the Urban Renewal Director to execute a contract with KNL Industries in the amount of $234,390 for construction of a new walking path connecting the logging road trail path with 99E. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you both, very much.
Thank you, guys.
Next item is to finalize the transition of the current Urban Renewal District expenses. Council wanted to hear from Emily on her opinion on closing the district, and so Emily and Jamie are going to handle this, so.
Do you prefer that I go down to the table, or I can talk to you from here?
You're fine.
You're fine right there.
You're fine there. Okay, okay. So, it sounds like we have some questions about how to go about closing down the Urban Renewal Agency or the plan, whichever you choose to do, and then timing of when you want that to happen, and before that happens, how you want to spend money. So, staff's gonna talk to you about the amount of money that you have in the special fund, projects suspended on, and that kinda thing, but I'm here to talk you through the legal process, which will help inform you make policy decisions in that regard. So, I'll just start very broad, so under state law, every single city has lying dormant within it and waiting to be called forth an Urban Renewal Agency, and that agency sits there dormantly until it is activated by the city via ordinance, and this is what the city council did back in 99 when it created the Canby Urban Renewal Agency. And so, upon its creation, the Urban Renewal Agency has to create an Urban Renewal Plan, which is the guiding document for how the agency will administer the urban renewal in the urban renewal district, which is identified as part of that plan. Funding comes from tax increments, so at the time of the plan's creation, the county looks at the district that the plan covers, freezes taxes at that assessed value, and anything collected thereafter based on the market value then goes back to the Urban Renewal Agency in order to fund projects. But the point of the Urban Renewal Agency is to fund projects and to do it, you know, in a timely manner, so the practice is for the agency to take on debt in order to get money upfront to then do those projects, so you aren't gonna sit around and wait for, you know, X million dollars to come in over X number, Y number of taxing years. So, in order to close down the agency, you have to have enough money in your special fund to pay off that indebtedness that you incur as part of getting your startup costs so you can actually do projects. You can't terminate the agency before that, but what you can do, even before the debt is paid down, if you know you have enough money, and it's just that your, your debt repayment plan, which I think is the case here, doesn't let you accelerate payments, you can tell the county, and in fact, you are obligated to tell the county if this is the case, like, hey, we have enough money to make those payments, we just haven't made them yet because our repayment plan doesn't allow us to pay faster, stop collecting tax increments and just send everything back to the taxing jurisdictions and don't do that any longer. You can, you have to do that as soon as you have enough money in the special fund, but the agency has the option of telling the county that even before that point, if you're at a point where you know you have enough money to do all the projects you wanna do, you can tell the county to stop collecting even before you pay everything off. So, when it is time to wind down the agency, when you reach that point, you do it via an ordinance, you find that the agency is no longer needed to accomplish the plan, either that's because everything in the plan has been accomplished, or you find that not everything in the plan needs to be accomplished now, circumstances changed, and then once, you know, two readings, once that's done, the agency does not go away forever, it just returns to its dormant status until it is called upon again. Your other option is to simply terminate the plan, not the agency, but the plan, when you reach the point where the plan, everything that needs to be done under the plan is done. And, you know, the agency can't act without a plan in place, so it is more or less effectively the same as terminating the agency, the agency just sticks around, but without the rudder of a plan, so there won't be any more tax increment financing, there won't be any more projects, because the plan is gone. So, those are your two kind of options. I would say generally, cities choose to terminate a plan rather than the agency itself if the agency has multiple plans covering multiple urban renewal districts, so one of the plans is done, and they no longer need that urban renewal district, but they need the five other, or whatever they're administering. So, it wouldn't make sense to terminate the agency, you would just terminate that singular plan. In your case, you only have the one- In your case, you only have the one district with the one plan, so you could do either. There wouldn't be an ill effect of terminating the plan or the agency, one or the other. I'm trying to think, the only other reason that it might make sense to terminate the plan rather than the agency itself is maybe some liability limitations, because once the agency is terminated, the city steps into the agency's shoes in terms of all potential legal liabilities and obligations. So leaving the agency around keeps the agency in its spot, holding that liability, rather than letting it flow to the city. But I'm not sure that would be a concern in this place, at least not that I'm aware of. And I'll pause there for questions.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you. Great presentation. The, if we were to terminate the plan because of the fact that if we kept that plan, then we're, we've got geographical boundaries already. And we would want to establish new geographical boundaries, so we'd need to terminate the plan, correct? Because we have geographical boundaries already for the current urban renewal agency.
Yeah, if you wanted to create a new urban renewal district, you would need a new plan. You can have multiple districts and plans, so, or depending on the specific facts of the situation, you could amend the current plan to extend potentially to the new geographical areas. Does that...
So we'd actually have to take the current geographical area and extend it?
It depends on what you're considering doing. I guess, I'm doing a bad way of explaining, like, it depends on what the goal of this would be. A new district would need a new plan, but if it's amending the current district, then you would amend the current plan.
Okay. Well, I think that it's incumbent on staff, on the city administrator, that this council has directed that we will close it down this year. And that's been the goal for two years, is to 25, 26, is to close it down 25, 26. So looking for a recommendation from the city administrator in regards to how do we achieve that to the benefit of the city. I'm not interested in spending any more money out of urban renewal, other than the ones that we've already approved. And Second Street and Fur is the only other one that I'm familiar with, because we've done the alleyways, the bike path, so we have one more that we need to do. And other than that, if we need to give money back to the junior taxing districts, I think that's great.
Mr. Patton.
So in your opinion, if we were to decide to close this, like, say, we're done with this one, we want to create a, we do our urban growth boundary expansion, we decide that land in the area that's now included in the urban growth boundary expansion is ripe for something like we did to increase the taxing districts through this plan, is it easier to create a new plan with just closing the plan and keeping the district open? Or doesn't make any, does it not make a difference?
It really wouldn't make a huge amount of difference. To reactivate a terminated agency has maybe one more administrative step in it other than, compared to keeping the agency around, planless, and then implementing a new plan. But either option, they're substantially similar in terms of administrative burden. Does that make sense?
Yes. The next question I have, I have a couple. You had said that if you closed down the district for the agency and the liability shifts then to the city, let's, I'm assuming that if something was put in, like, you know, a street light, or something was put in through the urban renewal, by the urban renewal agency, and it has caused some sort of harm, they want compensation for that. If the agency is still in existence but dormant, do they have to then come after a dormant agency? Or do they ultimately then still come to the city? Like, is there a benefit of liability to leaving a dormant agency open so they have to go to them where there is no money and there is no lights on? Or to a city where there is money and there's lights on?
Hmm. So if we're saying dorm, it's dormant because it has been, the agency has been terminated?
The plan has been terminated.
The plan has been terminated, the agency is still active, but it doesn't have anything to do.
Correct.
Then I'm not sure how that would play out in the hypothetical tort you explained. It would, the agency is a separate entity capable of being sued in its own right. So I, if our plaintiff's attorney, I would probably have to name the agency in the lawsuit. But if it's a situation where the agency no longer has any money and it's just, you know, lights on, no one's home for the purpose of not having to reactivate it later, then I would try to find a way to get to the city regardless, because that's where the money is. That's the best answer I have for you right now, but I can look into that a little bit more if you're interested in getting a fully fleshed out answer on liability.
I kind of figured it that, but I was maybe a little devious.
Wouldn't any plaintiff's attorney just name both? Because don't they just name everybody they can think of?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
That's what I would...
And then you see who gets successfully dismissed out, and that's, therein is where the question is, was would the city in any way be liable for the agency's actions while the agency is still active?
Okay. And then my last question is, you had said something about the city could, the agency could decide to stop collecting the taxes and send it to the junior taxing districts at any time, or something along those lines? So is that saying that, I was under the impression that we can't send the money back to the taxing districts until the debt is paid off? Because that's essentially what's paying the debt off, is the taxes coming in.
Yeah, sorry, I think I spoke a little quickly there. So you can tell the county to stop collecting the taxes, and then the county then does not, and that can happen before you terminate the agency, but the county does not initiate its process to update its rolls and then disperse things out to the junior taxing district until you, the agency tells the county that they have enough money in their fund to pay off their maximum indebtedness, including both principal interest, or has done so already. So that, that money, enough money to pay everything off is the trigger for the county to start the dispersment process.
So like hypothetically, if 10 years ago, the agency had decided, look, we're not going to spend any more money, and we're just going to let whatever tax increment comes in, come in and pay off the debt, and it's actually going to be paid off, like, in advance because there just isn't any more money spent, that then they could say, look, even though there's still time left on the agents, on the, on the plan, there's no sense of collecting any more tax increment because there's no debt, we don't plan on incurring any more debt, so now the money can go back to the taxing districts early?
That's correct. I'm understanding your hypothetical correctly. And then if I don't, I'll watch back and...
The way I understand your hypothetical is if we have money in the bank to pay off the debt, we could close it off. But in yours hypothetical, the money's not in the bank yet because you still have to get it...
Oh, you're saying there's, the money is still coming in, but it's projected to be enough to pay off?
Because I understand it, if there's money in the bank to pay it off, but they won't let us pay it off early, then we could just close it, leave the money in the bank, pay off the debt whenever we can, and if I'm understanding correctly.
That's correct. Yeah, it has to be in the fund, so it can't be based on projections of what's coming in.
Well, yeah, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, like, if at some point in time you choose not to borrow any more money, let's say 10 or 15 years before the district closes, you choose that you're not going to spend any more money, and you don't incur any more debt, but you're bringing in this tax increment, eventually, the amount that you're bringing in is going to catch up to the amount you owe, because you're in debt because you're not taking out any more debt.
Right.
So you could hypothetically get, reach that amount of tax increment coming in and pay off the debt that you had incurred previously before the district actually sunsets, right?
Yeah, in that case, you have a legal obligation to tell the county that you have enough money in the bank.
And that's when we could say, okay, now, we're not, we, we, we don't need this tax increment anymore, even though we are, even though the plan is not to its completion yet, we still have 10 years left on it, or five years left on it.
So, yeah.
The tax increment, it can go back to the taxing district.
Yeah, because you can terminate the agency without fulfilling every aspect of the plan. You just had, the council just has to find that it's no longer needed.
Okay. Because I was under the impression that it was like the sunset was the end-all, be-all. Like, didn't matter what was happening, the sunset was the end-all, be-all. But, okay, that makes sense.
Well, and I think it would also depend on, again, a lot of our situation too was the investor piece of it. Like, we couldn't pay off sooner without incurring penalties.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I understand, yeah. I was just, I was just running some hypotheticals through my brain.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's all I had.
So to bring it back to the piece at hand, it's just, we have those two pieces to look at, and I guess my follow-up question is, we still have on the books the potential, or I think we, as an agency, had decided to do the remaining street projects.
Right. I can speak to that as well.
Yeah, this is where it gets from theoretical to...
Let's talk reality.
Yeah. So the urban renewal agency and our finance director is here, but I think that I have a good understanding, and he can back me up if I say something wrong, but the tax increment financing will bring in enough money to cover the final part of the debt, and that payment will go forward on June 1st of 2026, just to make sure I was reading correctly, which would then trigger the Clackamas County to start to release those funds that had been previously held for the special taxing districts. Emily noted, but the city of Canby, our finance department looked into it with Clackamas County, and you have to give them about five months' notice. So our finance department is aware that in February of '26, they will let Clackamas County know that we will be ready to make that final debt payment June 1st. That will trigger the end of the tax increment financing, and that the money should theoretically then start to go back to the special taxing districts in October, November timeframe, which is when those monies are normally dispersed. And the money that it looks like we will have, and some of this is difficult because it's obviously based on property taxes, and so some of it is a very good, best guess by our finance department, but that it looks like setting, you know, moving aside personnel and materials and services that will have $1.8 million left to spend. The projects that had been identified, as Commissioner Davis had said, North Fur Street, so between First and Second Avenue, and we talked about that a little bit in the staff report, that's curbs, sidewalks, that, again, it deals with a safety issue in front of the American Legion, and some of those roads on, or some of those sidewalks on both sides are pretty damaged. It would have ADA ramps upgraded and continue some of that effort that we did along First Avenue in 2012. Then because it looks like we're going to have more money to spend than originally anticipated, what had been identified by the urban renewal agency is that if we had the funds to then kind of continue Second Avenue and finish that out between Fur Street and Elm Street. And the only other piece that was discussed were redoing, which I count as part of the Second Street update or Second Avenue update, were the medallions, which are at Elm, Fur, and Ivy on Second Avenue. So we wanted to present that all to you as these were the projects that had been identified and that, that we're kind of working towards the North Fur Street, but that with the $1.8 million, it really is up to the agency to determine how they'd like to spend the rest of that funding.
So with that being said, even if we execute that project and the funding for that project, because what's in the urban renewal district or agency funding will not cover that whole project, correct?
I think so.
It will.
It was my understanding.
It looks like it would likely come in a little bit over, but that the, in theory, there would be street funding available to be able to make sure that, to cover the rest of that project. Is that correct?
Depending on how much Second Avenue we did.
Okay, so if the money is there to do the project, does it then hamper our ability to notify the county in February?
No.
We still can meet the obligation to end or closing...
That $1.8 million is with the obligation fulfilled that we have been, you know, that we've been discussing with our urban renewal agency or city council, as well as some of the special taxing districts. So that $1.8 is with giving the notice in February, making the final debt payment in June, and then being able to finish that project.
So if the agency decides not to do the project, does that move things quicker?
No. But then that money would not go towards Fur, Second, and Medallions, it would go back to the special taxing districts.
We've accelerated the payments as much as we can, correct?
No, but it would go back to the taxing districts, so that's...
The payment of, the payment of the debt would be, would be done next June.
Regardless of what we do with projects. We've already, like, with our consolidations and stuff, we've accelerated as fast as we can.
So the money that's still left sitting there would then go back to the special districts if we don't do those road projects?
Right. Commissioner Davis.
Thank you. What are, I remember you mentioning these medallion things on the building, but I don't, I don't remember us directing you to approve those.
Commissioner Davis, it was actually the mayor that brought it up, and it's the, the, you know, the rough brick going through the intersection when we say the medallions? It's in the street, those rough brick areas that are falling apart.
Oh.
Nothing on the building. It's, it's one here at Ivy and Holly, sorry.
Ivy, Holly, Grant.
Yeah. And they're just, it's got a concrete border and all that brick in the center, so you can put and stamp concrete like first.
And that was your fourth priority.
Yeah, and so I can understand that, but taking street, street fee money out of the operating budget, if we're over, how does that relate to the goals for the street fee on projects? Because we would be preapproving, to a certain degree, an operating budget, because if we're going over, we'd be preapproving that operating budget. Out of the operating budget, and I'm not interested in that, because that's not identified as far as street fee projects or has to go through the budget process.
Yeah, the, we would just be wanting to hear how much of that, if you wanted to spend the $1.8 million, and we would put that project together, we could spend all that, we could spend a million, you know, whatever this agency wanted us to spend of that $1.8. It got up to $1.8 because we came under budget on the alleys and the paths. So if you wanted to spend $750,000, or you wanted to spend all of it, I would just put together a project. And if I went over a little bit to spend all that money, we would take it out of the street fund balance and just budget according for it. Not street maintenance fee or anything like that, we would just take it out of our reserves, which we have healthy reserves in streets.
And I think that that would likely come forward as a supplemental budget if it needed to go that route.
Correct. We would come ask your permission to do that if...
Thank you.
Commissioner Patton.
Yeah, so I remember a discussion about the medallions, and at that point in time, and it sounds like you just, I just want to confirm what you had said, that the reason the medallions are under consideration again is because the money that was saved in the alleyways and the pathway would now get us close to actually changing out, replacing those?
It, I think it'd be close with the $1.8 to do the improvements listed. The medallions, if I remember correctly, were just like, if you have extra money and can do it, bring it to us, and you guys will make a decision if you wanted to spend that on them. So, so I believe, Council Patton, we could do Fur, First, and maybe one or two medallions. Or, sorry, Second Avenue, thank you, Jamie.
Okay. I guess, for me, I, I am, I, this is where Jim and I diverge on this topic. I see the last little bit of this money as a golden opportunity for the city to do things that it wouldn't otherwise be able to do in the, in either the near or distant future. And based on the, driving over those medallions and how they are deteriorating, I think it would be, if, if, if construction costs and stuff are actually coming in kind of under right now, I say, I think it behooves us to leverage that lower now, rather than waiting and possibly paying something higher later, and delivering on, you know, getting more bang for our buck now. So I would be for using any surplus to deal with as many of that, as much of that medallion thing as possible.
Mr. Hudson.
To that point, if we, if the urban renewal agency, if we don't use the funds in the agency to do those pre-projects, how long would it take for us to be able to fund that project on the city end of things?
For, oh, you know, we'll have a...
Sorry, and/or what would we have to forego to get there?
You know... You know, I would be scared to move forward with that, with all of the projects we have going. We'll have Walnut is a portion of, it's out to bid right now, which I think that'll make you very happy, Mayor. But when we get these prices in, it's going to let our finance department know where we're at with all our reserves, because we've been saving this money for these projects. So, right now, until we get Walnut out to bid, get prices back, I can't really, really accurately answer that.
So it would move further out?
Yeah, it would move further out until we know where we're at with our funds, because we know you guys want to keep a pretty good fund balance.
Commissioner Davis.
Thank you. So Jared, where are we at with the Second Street project? Because at our last meeting, we talked about, you know, that that had to get started in order for us to be able to expend the funds.
Where we're at is, we just selected an engineer of record. I have to bring it to council to get it approved, and then I can start on engineering. So we're not started yet. And it'll be helpful for this meeting tonight or in the near future to tell us how much of that money wants to be spent. That would, if it's the full $1.8, or if it's not, that will help me with what, how much I design, how much engineering we do for the First, you're talking First Street project?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I'm not opposed, Jason, to doing the medallions as long as we can get that planned in there. But, you know, the second part is, we talked about $1.8 million, is, I assume that's backing out salaries that are currently in the Urban Renewal budget. Is that backing it out, and would that give us more money available because of, we're paying salaries out of economic development? Did we add that in to the one, or is that part of the $1.8 million?
It's not part of the $1.8 million. The salaries are not.
Okay, so we're assuming then that we're paying for salaries out of this next year budget?
Oh, that, I...
Sorry, yeah.
I believe that the salaries are being paid out of Urban Renewal, because the funding would still be coming in to be able to cover that. This is what this $1.8 assumes. So that, the $1.8 is just for the capital projects, so streets, medallions, et cetera.
Okay, well, just, okay, and we can't talk about the city budget here, obviously, because this is an Urban Renewal budget. But just heads up that I'm going to really be pushing that those salaries go into the operating budget this year, and that would give us more money in Urban Renewal to do the medallions and other projects. But we have to start accounting for those salaries in this next year budget.
Anything else? Yes, so, sorry, Commissioner Rodman.
Based on the information that we talked about before, about needing the money in the bank to be able to talk to the county to stop the payments ahead, if we didn't do these projects, would we be able to tell the county to stop the payments earlier than what we're thinking? So that's what we were talking about before, is like, we've already moved it ahead as far as we can.
We've accelerated the loans as much as we can. Yeah, if we tried to accelerate it, we'd be in prepayment penalties at that point, so, yeah.
Commissioner Patton.
Oh, no, you're next?
I saw your hand.
Okay, so I guess to Commissioner Davis's point, it sounds like that you're going to let the county know that we don't need the tax money anymore, so that it kind of falls around June 1st, is when the various taxing districts will start getting their money.
The way that the money is distributed through Clarkmoss County, that wouldn't happen until October, November, which is common with how those...
During the tax period, okay. So I guess...
November, December of '26.
November, December of '26, okay. I guess to Commissioner Davis's point, what I would like to send up to the council is, I agree that we need to start, we need to make a plan for how those salaries are going to be transitioned, but I would be for baking into that plan, leaving those salaries in the district up until the zero hour, and then, once that zero hour hits, then doing the, figuring it coming out of the general fund, so that we can time those salaries coming out of the city side of thing as close as possible to when the city is going to start to receive that tax increment, rather than before that.
That's what I was going to propose, because October, November is actually into fiscal year '26, '27. So we could afford to leave those salaries in the district one more year this next year, and then move them over as we budget for '26, '27. We won't receive any tax increment, but we will be receiving our share of the taxes in that same year.
I think that might be a hard sell for Commissioner Davis.
Yes, just to make myself real clear, is that in last year's budget process, and even the year before, we talked about transitioning those salaries into the operating budget. And that was supposed to happen, to me, last year, start transitioning, whether it was half or whatever, and then going to the full amount this budget year. And so, I wanted to make myself real clear that that's what we discussed. And if we want to go back and listen to the minutes of those meetings, we can. But that's what the council approved at that time. Because if we have those funds available to finish up these projects, then we're not taking them out of the reserves. But we have to transition and plan for those salaries coming into the city operating budget.
Did you have something?
No, go ahead.
I have a question. Kind of off-topic, but on-topic. When you say there's an early payment penalty, how much is that early payment penalty?
It's quite a bet, if I remember right.
Yeah, I don't think we can, I don't think we can make it anywhere.
Well, I'm just curious, because I deal with penalties all the time, and sometimes the penalties are a lot lower than the actual costs.
If I remember right, it was pretty lofty.
For a one-year prepayment? I'm just curious, because I hear the word penalty, and immediately my mind goes, how much?
I don't, I don't have the answer for the penalty, but the one thing to keep in mind is that the, we would not have the money to be able to pay it off, you know, until the...
Okay, that's fair. I just, everybody says, or there's a penalty, and every time I hear there was a penalty, I, my mind just says, how, how much?
Is it worth it?
Yeah, and sometimes the penalties are fine to pay, and, but sometimes they're not. Depends what they are, how much they are.
Emily, I know it's not necessarily laid out here, but is this a consensus piece for staff, or should we, or should there actually be a motion for staff? Lead me to the next step here.
What do you guys want?
I think that, I think we were hoping that this would provide a discussion, that maybe some consensus, you know, with it being a new item, it was so that we could, you know, it seems like you just sunset the district. It's done, you pay, you make the payment. But then Emily provided that there were different avenues for making that happen, whether that was by ordinance or resolution. And so I think that we were hoping to get some additional insight from you all about how you would like that to happen, the ordinance route, the resolution route. And then also, just to confirm, you know, we've talked about Fur, but now that we're starting to have that real number of $1.8 million, what does that look like, and how, how exactly do you want us to proceed? Is it North First Street from First to Second? North First Street, continue down Second Avenue to finish that out, which has been talked about? Where those two and medallions, provided that we have the funding available? So, so I think that there's two different pieces that are kind of wrapped into one discussion point tonight, which is, you know, starting to identify how we want to close the district. And frankly, this is, could be just the first conversation. We could bring it back again, you know, give you time to noodle on the situation, and bring it back with, you know, an opportunity for motions to be carried so that we know exactly how to move forward. The only piece where I would say that time is of the essence is, you know, obviously, we'll be budgeting for projects, so we'll want to know that for the next year. And also, that we're going to, the other piece is that February timeframe of meeting to let Clarkmoss County know. There's a lot of time between now and next February, but also, it goes pretty quickly. We've got a lot of work sessions and a lot of meetings, so we can proceed however you'd like, us too.
Well, then I'll throw my two cents out there right now. I think that, I think that we go from an URA aspect in terms of agency. I say we get to the point of terminating the plan, but allowing the agency to go dormant, and not necessarily shut down agency. That's the first piece. The other piece regarding, I say, in terms of the project, I, my opinion, I think we go all the way through and do, all the way up to all three medallions, if we can do it.
Okay, we have six minutes until the city council meeting. I feel like this is two separate conversations. The termination of the plan and sunsetting the agency, and the project money, which seems to have a quicker deadline. So I think that tonight, let's hammer out a consensus on what we want to do with the projects, and then revisit the sunset conversation. Are you okay with that?
Could I say one thing?
Okay, sure.
Oh, sorry, it's not my meeting.
Touching meeting, geez.
She's in charge. If I, if we could just have, for budgeting purpose, how much of the, what you wanted to spend, we could talk about projects later. That way we can, if it's the full, whatever's rolled over, would help us a lot on getting in there. We can pick projects at any time before engineering, if that makes sense. Or if you can give us both, even better.
So you just want to ballpark, we want to spend this much money.
Do we want to spend it all, whatever rolled over? Do we want to spend it, or do we want to, that would help me, if that makes sense?
And I think, I think our finance director would be very angry if I didn't, again, point out that the $1.8 is the best budget number that he can identify now. So it could be $1.7, it could be $1.9, just to make sure that we're acknowledging that.
All right, so the consensus we're looking for is, how much of the remaining project dollars do we want to spend? Commissioner Patton.
I am for $1.8, and get as many of those projects done as possible, okay?
I'm just going to poll.
Yep, I'm same vote.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes, with...
With a caveat, obviously.
With the caveat.
Here comes the butt.
With the caveat that if we have the salaries going back in, that should put us up to over $2 million, probably $2.3 million, if the salaries are added back into the Urban Renewal Agency, and we can do all the projects.
Okay. Councilor Sterns?
I would say that, in the budgeting process for your Urban Renewal Agency, that you should budget to spend about 85% to 80% of what's left, because if we budget for exactly what's left, then someone's going to go over.
Okay, Commissioner Rodman, your thoughts?
I'm fine with budgeting on the lower end of what our estimates are, so more or less kind of what they, Commissioner Sterns said.
Do as many projects as we can, but, okay.
I don't want to have the conversation that says, oops, we have $200,000 more, and we can't close it next year, the next year. So I would rather have $200,000 that we give to the junior agencies, than run the risk of saying, oops, we have to go finish this project, the tractor ran out of gas, or whatever.
And I just want to say that I don't think that in any of the options presented tonight, whether that's about the projects or about the agency, I don't believe that any of those, that there's really a scenario, unless you chose to keep the agency going, like if you said all, right now, we want to keep it all going, and we're going to do this all again, which is not what we're hearing, but that there's no, oops, the agency has to roll over, that the money wouldn't be coming back to the taxing districts. That's, that would not happen. Is that...
I just imagine if there's going to be some project you're working on that has a big overage for some reason, like the streets all tore up, and oop, we have to spend the money, is that going to, is that going to cause the problem of having to keep the agency open another year to do that obligation? Or that's why I want the reserve kind of thing?
And I believe if the timeline went further than originally anticipated, then there could be a transfer, an interdepartmental transfer between the Urban Renewal Agency transferring those funds to the street fund, so that if the project, for whatever reason, was delayed, you know, unseasonable weather or whatever, and it was delayed or pushed, that then the money would be there still to cover that project. But that if the project went into a new fiscal year, it wouldn't affect the end of the Urban Renewal.
I'll just hop in there really fast. Might be, but, might be, might be. So it would be subject to some sort of contractual relationship between the URA and the city to be explored if that ever happens. I round tabled that scenario, Scott, that's what I was talking about. I talked to a few people about it. It's nothing that we've ever seen come up before, but our advice, if that becomes a situation, is to have a formalized agreement in place, so that it doesn't look like the city's just getting money willy-nilly, which wouldn't be the case, but, you know, keeping those lines.
Just real quick, so Jared, when we get these projects, can we auction it then? So in other words...
Bid alternatives.
Bid alternatives for the council, or for the commission to decide on, so that if we are over budget, we just cut those, whatever.
No problem.
Yeah.
Okay, do you have what you need from us?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and I would also agree with Commissioner Davis. I would like you to look into transitioning the salaries sooner rather than later, and see what that looks like. Final thought?
I will, and strap in, folks, I am in line with Councilor, with Commissioner Davis and Chair Hensley, that we, I would like to see what those numbers would look like transitioning it over early, but more of a menu of options, because knowing that we may have a shortfall on the city side of things, I would not want that transition to exacerbate that problem.
Yeah, okay.
I agree.
I recall the final thought.
That's two times, Jase.
Jase.
I was going to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, so...
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved by Vice Chair Hudson to adjourn. Donald made a motion. We're going to take a five-minute break.
Wait, all those in favor?
Oh, all right.
Aye.
All right. Bye.
Civic Engagement Academy is April 10th and will have the Swim Center and the Police Department highlighted at that one.
What will take place at the Police Department or here?
At the Police Department.
Yeah.
Is this, is this where I plug in a donut joke? Will there be donuts?
They'll be gone by the time you get there.
Oh, former Fire Chief Davis says that they'll be gone by the time we get there, so.
Oh my God.
There's so many food, but I cannot remember what it is going to be.
See, like I danced us up to the line and Counselor Davis had to take us over it, so. All right, so anyways, Marissa, thank you for, thank you and please thank your team for us and what you do, so thank you. Next on the agenda is Citizen Input and Community Announcements. I have no yellow cards. Maya, is there anyone online tonight? Nope, all right. The two citizens say no. Next on the agenda is the Approval of the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Consent Agenda that includes the minutes of the March 12th, 2025 Special Called Work Session and the Appointment of Member Tom O'Brien to the Traffic Safety Commission with a term ending June 30th, 2025.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Counsel President Hensley and seconded by Counselor Patton to approve the Consent Agenda which include, wow, approval of the March 12th, 2025 Special Called Work Session and approval of the Appointment of Member Tom O'Brien to the Traffic Safety Committee with a term ending June 30th of 2025. Any discussion or conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries 5-0. Next on our agenda this evening is Ordinances and Resolutions. I think it's our first and only this evening, is Ordinance 1641, an ordinance authorizing the City Administrator to execute a contract with Curran McLeod Incorporated in the amount of $126,000 for construction phase engineering services for improvements to Northeast 10th Avenue from North Locust Street to North Pine Street and for a second reading on April 16th.
Hello, Mayor and Counsel.
I'm here again for 10th Avenue.
It seems like I've been here a lot for 10th. This project, as you know, you approved it. It's actually getting started the 14th of this month and they're actually asking for one week extension because of the fair, so they don't bother the fair, but hope to be complete in October with all the 10th, so that's exciting news. So this here is engineering for the construction phase to help with project management, all of the stuff that we might run into. It's turned into a really big project with the sewer and everything else. So we put out an RFP, advertised it, and Curran McLeod was the only person that bid on it. And since they did the design, it kind of made sense of why other people didn't bid on it. They probably knew that they were gonna, you know, be selected on it because they had the most experience. But anyways, we did everything right, everything's good, and so I'm coming here to ask you guys to approve this contract so I can have engineering support on this and hear if there's any other questions for 10th Avenue.
Great, thank you. Counselor Sterns.
Just a question about, so a couple of weeks ago, we approved the project, but this is not part of that, what we approved earlier. I'm just sort of interested to why we have to do more than one vote for the same project.
That's a good question, and I've been working on this project for 15 years and acquiring easements, and I've had several, Curran McLeod in there several times helping me with that. And so originally, we came to contract for the design phase of it and bid support and Curran McLeod was selected for that. And then we went out to bid for the contract, and I don't currently have an engineer of record, so they would have normally done this work for us. I will have an engineer of record, I'll be coming to you soon with that for approval, but that's why I had to go out for this quick RFP. So by not having, by not having an engineer of record for a short time, it's created more work for me. And you?
Okay, well, that's fine, I'm just trying to understand the, when we do the original project, if, you know, on budget for things, if this was part of the budget or was that included in or is it something that is thrown on extra?
It's, it's a several things, Counselor Sterns. I budgeted for, I thought we had to budgeted enough to for all of the, everything. We didn't have enough in there for the construction support of it. And we, our project manager retired and with Spencer, myself and the public work staff, we can usually manage it. And so this here is just added support for us. So in the future, it won't be going like this, it'll be going like you were talking about.
Okay, no, I just like this, see, yeah, I don't know, because my, my memory is faulty and sometimes I forget what happened last time.
Well, I'm, I'm going through the same thing. It's a lot to absorb, especially when we keep bringing contractors, but it is a big project. And we are still, we're very well under budget on this project.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Patton?
Yeah, so, and then, so with this, awesome, I'm totally looking forward to seeing this go through, but to your point, Counselor Sterns, this goes to something that we've talked about as being a goal of opening up our city charter, because some of the reasons why we see these ordinance for these amounts is because our city charter approval for our city administrator to approve these sort of things is so low that normally other city councils probably wouldn't even see this because it's at, with the level that it's at. So that's something that in the future, hopefully, we can, we can address, is that down the correct path?
Yeah, I, my, my, my concern, which is not anything in particular to the project, my just, my just concern is to have to approve one amount and then approve another amount afterwards when it'd be nice to have things all bundled together, so we're approving the whole amount instead of having, okay, we're gonna spend this amount, oh, and here's another amount, and here's another amount, and here's another amount, and pretty soon we add them all together. I just think it'd be cleaner if we just said, this is what we're gonna spend, which includes the engineering, whatever, and the other things involved, and then later on, we can say, yeah, we approved it and maybe we have to vote for, you know, basically.
Well, as Jerry said, I think once we get the engineer of record on board again, you won't see this type of thing.
That's correct, and, and, and we, we want it that way. I think, what is this, the third staff report and ordinance we've had to write and, and it's worked for Maya, Eileen, and then all of you.
Well, I understand the need for it, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just pushing for the consolidation of all the numbers into the one thing.
Here soon, we feel like this, our engineering and staff, engineering and projects are gonna be streamlined.
Okay.
Counselor Patton?
I move to approve Ordinance Number 1641, authorizing the City Administrator to execute a contract with Curran McLeod Incorporated in the amount of $126,000 for construction phase engineering services for improvements on Northeast 10th Avenue from North Locust Street to North Pine Street to a second reading on April 16th, 2025.
Second. A motion has been made by Counselor Patton and seconded by Counselor Davis to approve Ordinance Number 1641, authorizing the City Administrator to execute a contract with Curran McLeod Incorporated in the amount of $126,000 for construction phase engineering services for improvements to Northeast 10th Avenue from North Locust Street to North Pine Street with a second reading on April 16th, 2025. Any further comment or discussion? Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry, appreciate it. Okay, moving on, so next on the agenda is old business, which does not appear to have to be any old business. We'll move into new business. Item A tonight is the Street Maintenance Fee Updates.
Yes.
So, Eileen.
Counsel, you asked for a work session, or not a work session, but an update on the Street Maintenance Task Force, and Jerry is going to give a brief update on that, and then once he's done, I wanted to just go over the email that I had sent out earlier this week that has the current fees, proposed new fees in the various residential, non-residential categories. So Jerry, if you would just kind of start off and get us started on this?
Yeah, you've seen the staff report that we prepared for you here. Just to give you some history of what I remember of this, I have brought three different work sessions to counsel on this over the past. I think it's round three, and on the third one, you asked us to form a task force to come help with this. And in this, like, we kind of, I think I was with the last city administrator, Scott Archer, we laid out, like, who to pick from the task force members. So we ended up having a pretty big list, which I thought was too big, but it ended up working out because we ended up with a smaller group of who could attend. And so we had three meetings on this. Counselor Patton and Counselor Hensley attended all of them. I think the mayor attended the last one.
The last two.
Last two, okay. So the first one, a little shaky, but we all got to know each other, all that stuff, did it. Second one, more productive, and then the third, we had a pretty good meeting. What I want to talk about in here is the minutes that we took from them. There was a lot going on and they weren't approved yet, and so they're not 100% accurate of what it is, so, of what we discussed on that last recommendation from the task force. And so after the, we had that meeting, there were some other discoveries, and here we are tonight. And so what is in here, what I wanted to give you an update on, is basically, in here is a slide, I don't know if we want to bring this up, of what we were kind of, we kept looking at different kinds of stuff, but this is the one that helped us wrap our mind around what we needed to do. And so the other thing that I wanted to let you know, we've been working on this so long, this is 2018 material. So, you know, I did a PCI, went out for RFP, had a company come in, scan all the roads, and we've been working on this ever since. So this information is starting to get old, so it's still accurate, but our roads have probably gone down a little bit since then, if that makes sense. Would you, Counselor Patton, would you agree with that?
Oh, 100%.
Yeah. So in here, they went over on what we're, what we're currently collecting, and basically just doing some quick math on this, they went off looking at it at a minimum to get us to, for what I need, for what we are currently collecting, to keep us where we're at on the PCI, to just keep our roads in the conditions they are, it would be need raised to 746, and that's across the board, if you take that math across to everything, to the businesses and everything. If you take it up to the 1046, it increases 2.5 points, two and a half CPI points. And if everyone, does everyone understand the PCI? Sorry, let me start with that, the Pavement Condition Index?
Can you just explain to me? I don't know.
Okay, it's, it's basically, it's a zero to 100, and 100 being the best, zero being gravel, or not even gravel, mud. Our, our, we're in, right now, we're at like a 75 overall with all our streets in 2018, so we probably dropped a little bit on that. So to maintain a 75, and that's kind of what we came to you guys earlier on in the presentations, what do you want your roads to be at? Do you want them to be at a 75, an 80, you know, all that? And each point costs money. And so this slide kind of shows you where we're at with $5 per household, bringing in $670,000. And that is decreasing us by three points in the Pavement Condition Index a year, by just where we've been doing. So if you take the 72 that we're at, go back 2018, we've dropped a lot of points, and people will say that, they've seen our roads, I had a complaint today, which our roads are not horrible, but they are dropping. So moving it up to the 746, that there kept us where we're at, and so on and on. So you move it up, higher, higher points, more roads paved, more money, more pavement. So that's what the task force was basing this off of, and that's if you can read in there in the staff report, what we talked about. So that all being said, I'm just here if you guys have any questions on where we're at with this.
Eileen, you want to take over from there?
Yeah, so if you would bring up the worksheet. So taking the, the task force's recommendations that were in the minutes, all the other ones are, the other ones that weren't mentioned in the minutes were more long-term. They were tacking a percentage to, tacking a street maintenance fee on top of the events that were, the event sales in town, and then the idea of increasing the local gas tax. So I think those were the other two elements of, of discussion that there was, but again, they're, they're longer term. So taking the, the recommendations, the 746, the 1046, the 1443, which represent an increase of 49%, 109% or 168% respectively, that's on the residential side of the equation, and then the .522 is the current fee for non-residential permits, or non-residential structures. And it is much more complicated by a formula that involves the square footage of the building, the trip generation rate, and one other factor. Anyway, what I wanted you to see is, so this, this graph is focused on residential and non-residential. So on the residential side, you would see the first box is the proposed new fees, the second box is just the change, how much additional revenue would be raised. So for a standard residential, monthly fee is $5, yearly fee would be 60. So at 746, for the standard residential, it would go from seven, from 5 to 746, which would generate, or that residence would pay $89.52 per year. Or 1046 would raise 125, or 1343 would raise 161. On a senior housing, which is a less in residential fee, the amounts would go from 209 to 312 to 437 to 561. On the non-residential side, I just took example, non-residential customers, and each one of these categories is actually an average of four different actual resident or non-residential structures that are in the billing rate. So industrial, 433, 438, they would pay, they're currently paying, again, this consolidated amount, so they're paying $5,261 a year. So if at, at 746 or the percentage, the equivalent of that, they would be paying 6454, 7, 912, or $1,177 for their monthly rate. And then for a church, it would go from 81, 61, 121, to 121, 170, or 219. For a downtown business, their monthly rate would be 2008, it would increase from 29 or 42 or 53. And then for a retail, bigger retail, perhaps a grocery store, that kind of thing, it would be 290, 29046 would be the current rate, 433, 607, and 780 for their, under these, again, these different scenarios. I also looked at the total revenue, I looked at the budget, so this year, we budgeted $600,000 in revenue, and at the 49%, we would raise roughly 800, $900,000. At 109, it would be 1.2 million, and at 1, or at 168%, it would be 1, 1.6 million dollars. So that's about how much revenue would be raised in total. And so that's on the business maintenance, or the, the street maintenance fee. The committee also recommended that we increase the current fees from $50 to $100. So we processed roughly about 1,450 business licenses per year, so the current revenue is 772,500, the proposed new fee would be 145,000. So I just wanted to give you the range of estimates and the impact that would be, the range of, or the range of impact that would be on certain businesses in the downtown area, or across the city, actually. So with that, we still don't know exactly how many fees are, have been miscoded, we still need to, to do some more work on that. But we can budget that fiscal year '25, '26 street fund without this additional revenue. So I would propose that we take the time, make sure that we have our, that we have our, that we have our ducks in row, that we have everything determined, and as long as we can budget this next year, street fund budget without this new revenue, that we take the time that we need to do the proper auditing and accounting of this. The, the process of auditing got more complicated than I thought it would be, which is, I, I know I told the, the street fund, the Street Maintenance Task Force that we would take about a couple of months to do it, it's just gotten, as I've gotten into it, it's much more involved than I thought it would be, so.
Maya, can you bring that last slide back up, please?
Jerry, I need to thank you for the update. So if I, going back to the first slide that you had, Jerry, looking at this one here, so if by going to $7.46, that still doesn't meet the need, will continue to decline?
In 2018, it kept us there, but if we've dropped points, I think it's gonna be, it could be a steady decline at this point, but I don't.
Again, labor and asphalt costs have gone up, and so there's, there's only so much that we can do. So the 1046 does, brings us?
It brings it up.
Keeps us at a level, at the level we're at?
It takes us up two and a half points.
Okay, but based on, two and a half points based on 2018 numbers, not 2025 numbers, which conceivably in the last seven years, those number, that the Pavement Condition Index has declined.
Yep.
Okay.
And the other thing, Mayor Hodson, to really think about too, is high fuel prices, less paving. It's all fluctuated off fuel.
So which leads, and thank you for segueing into my next question, we're not paving every year.
We're doing every other year now.
We've gone to an every other year cycle because?
We can get up better pricing when we get over that million dollar, that 1.2 million.
Okay. Those were, those were the questions I had.
The other thing is we can save up, we use street, less restricted street funds because of all the ADA improvements we have to do with them.
Gotcha.
And so this money is protected between the curbs only. And so we use the other bucket of money to do the sidewalk improvements, the ADA improvements required.
Okay.
Counselor Patton?
So I'm curious if the council would indulge me in me sharing some other data about this and where, where we're kind of from here. Would, would you, would you be willing to entertain this?
Please.
Okay. So it just so happens that I have the big board here. So we're gonna do this analog, Jerry, you can, you can weigh in as we go through this.
Okay. Jason, should we move it over to a mic?
Yes.
Well, I think you need to be able to see this, right? So, numbers wise, centerline paving, okay? That's how Jerry figures this out, is the number of centerline miles that are paved in the city, okay? Back in 2009 is when this whole thing came about, yes.
So looking, okay, never mind.
So just give me a minute.
No, no, I was just looking at camera angles, so, but.
Can you see it?
Yep, Gordon worked his magic.
So in 2011, Jerry was able to pave 3.32 centerline miles with what money was coming into the street maintenance fee. In 2015 is when he started foregoing, and in 2015, he paved .42 miles. In 2020, he paved zero centerline miles. In 2021, he paid 1.58 centerline miles, okay? Now, to give you an idea of things, in 2009, the $5 was worth $5, okay? According to projections, in 2021, the $5 was $3.10. Based on rough, back in the end look calculations, that $5 in 2025 numbers is probably around $2.79, okay? So that is a steep decline on what Jerry's able to do with that money, okay? Now, one of the other things is if the fee had have been tied to inflation in 2009, when it was originally put in, in 2021, it was estimated that because of that lack of ties to inflation, we have forgone $1.36 million in street maintenance money because the city council has done nothing to adjust it. Now, I have been pushing as a member of the Budget Committee for over 10 years, going back 10 years, for the council to do something to adjust this number, and nothing has happened. And so by getting that counsel, I've been able to push this forward, okay? So, and now we're gonna talk about budget numbers. In 2023, there was about $589,030 that came in for the street maintenance fee. Then in 2022, it was $606,190. 2021 was $610,238, and in 2020, it was $582,112, okay? So in looking at these numbers, it's fairly consistent. Now, there is some anomalies in this area here when we've had an increase of houses built in the community. Why has this number not gone up? Now, some of the concerns that have come out of this is that there is the possibility that there are industrial businesses that are getting charged a $5 fee instead of what they should be getting charged through the, through the formula. And the reason they'd be getting charged a $5 fee, and correct me if I'm wrong, is because when the account is initially set up, the system defaults to the $5 fee, and then it ultimately has to get adjusted from there. Is that correct? Anybody?
Eileen? I, yes, that's a fair assessment.
Okay. So one of the things that has got the task force all who is because in her email, she said it is possible that this goes all the way back to 2018. I do not think that is the case. If we remember, in 2022, we had a major change in our finance department. It got granited, a bunch of people left, and over the course of the last couple of years to now, it is being rebuilt. So from what I understand of conversations with various people, it is most likely in this timeframe that things got out of whack. So I ask you, in the last two or three years, how many large industrial buildings or large commercial buildings have been built in the city of Camden? Not that many, right? So are we probably, could we be missing out on some funds? You bet we could. But here is the ultimate question, if we do nothing, we are at $600,000, okay? Now, I went back through and watched, just to confirm what I remembered from the Street Maintenance Task Force meeting, the last one. The recommendation from the task force was to do the $10.46 The recommendation from the task force was to do the ten dollar and forty-six cent for houses with an increase across the board of similar. And so it would essentially be the one hundred and nine percent increase. So if we take last year's number and increase that by the hundred and nine percent that they were recommending, we would be at two hu, one million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand seventy-nine dollars, okay? Almost six hundred thousand dollars in street maintenance fee money, when we are already one point three-six million dollars in the hole. So my question and my ask of this council to consider is this. Is there likely some problems? Yes. But are we willing to give up tens of thousands of dollars in revenue to try and find it? Or no, are we willing to give up hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue now to try and find tens of thousands of dollars of revenue? I say no. My hope is that we can honor either what the recommendation was from the task force or something similar, to at least start the needle moving in the right direction to get the street maintenance fee on the right track. And then request from Eileen and her staff, a comprehensive plan of what they plan to do to audit the numbers and come back to this council with reports on how many they've done, how many months, how long it's going to take. And then in a year or so, once those numbers are figured out and we've actually received funds for a year of budget to really know where we're at, then reconvene the task force to say, Ken, do we need to make changes? Is everything tracking okay? Because ultimately, as Jerry was showing in that thing, and I've kind of run out of paper here, at the seven forty-six, it's only a million dollars. We're still behind. It's not until you get to twenty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents per single-family household that we are able to move the paving number to an eighty-four percent over five years and be paving six point seven, six point seven-six centerline miles in the city. So even if we do seven dollars, or ten dollars, or something, we still aren't even there. So I understand where the street maintenance task force is coming from, that they have concerns based on what was put forward to them. But for me, the concern is how do we deliver to the citizens of this community on a program that has been in operation for fifteen years and not adjusted? And my, my, what I recommend is that we make some sort of change for this fiscal year, either what the group, what the task force recommended, or something lower, just to be safe. And then at least, like I said, get that needle moving to where we're starting to increase revenue. Because let's face it, the feds are gonna start cutting money to us for streets. The state is already talking about cutting money to us for streets, which is gonna impact the counties, so they're gonna cut us. This is the way that we control the destiny for our citizens. So that's what I'm asking. That's it.
Thank you, Councilor Patton. Jerry, any thoughts on what was presented or Eileen?
Yeah, we're on what Jason's projections here are accurate on the, you know, how much we can pave all that there.
Okay. Council President Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jerry, for the presentation on the need. And I think the need has been clear for a long time. However, I just want to point out, I don't know how many of my colleagues read their email today, but there is no recommendation from the task force. They have rescinded their numbers based on an email. In, in our city administrator's words, we are not sure how extensive the problem is. We aren't sure how much revenue has been forgone. It literally quoted, "We cannot trust the total amount of revenue that any increase scenario, seven, ten, or thirteen dollars, would result in. We need to go back and audit the program before we can be confident in making a recommendation." Based on some of those things and the fact that this is all based off of the November thirteenth minutes, which have never been approved by the committee because they have not reconvened, and I'm not talking at you, I'm sorry, I just realized.
Yeah, you're fine.
They've not reconvened to approve those minutes, and there are errors in those minutes. And they have been, they've worked all of their work on this based on erroneous numbers. And so they don't feel confident in any, any recommendation whatsoever when we have businesses that are possibly overcharged, undercharged, or not charged, and we don't know what the revenue numbers actually were. So they have rescinded their recommendation. There is no recommendation from the task force.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add one more thing?
Yes, sir.
It has always been in the hands of this body to adjust this fee. And in my opinion, I, I'm all for getting citizen input. But citizen input is just that, citizen input. The buck stops with us. We were elected to this position. It is our responsibility to ensure that we are delivering the services that our citizens demand. And one of them is quality streets, okay? It is within this group's purview, regardless of what any community or task force or anybody says, to adjust this fee. And in my opinion, and people will bristle at this, this whole thing about rebooting the task force and sending it back to them has been nothing but a way for the body to kick the can down the road and not make the decision. I say it's time for us to put our big people pants on and make a decision to move this forward and then let the numbers and such play out. Because even, even if, even if Eileen goes through and audits everything and we do the ten forty-nine, forty-six or whatever, and we ended up, we end up finding another three hundred thousand dollars, it's still not enough. And it's gonna take a year or two to even figure that out. So again, I implore you, why should we forego hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue that we can deliver to the citizens of this community in the form of quality roads? Continue to have Jerry rehash this thing every year? When we know the numbers are what they are, and ultimately they are not going to change, we are going to be short. I, I implore you, and I am for this council moving forward with some sort of adjustment for the next fiscal year.
Well, Daniel, in the year.
Sorry, that's fine, okay. Councilor Sterns, and then I'll come to.
Well, without getting into a lot of controversy, I just have some questions that came down my mind doing this. And maybe Scott can answer this question. But as far as the money raised from the street maintenance fees, do we have a rough idea of percentage of residential money versus business money?
I do not know.
No, no. I was wondering if somebody that can bring that up, because that gives an idea of the, whatever, the magnitude of the, of the, of the issue of whether the businesses have been classified correctly. So obviously, if we're talking ten percent, it's different than if it's seventy percent, right?
I'm sorry. Let me ask the question, I'm sorry.
Well, the residents, we as residents pay if the fee, and the businesses pay a fee. So under gross receipts, anyway, what percentage currently is from a business versus?
Of the dollars in the revenue.
Yeah, so that's kind of a question I have. I think that would be helpful to answer. It gives us an idea, even if it's gonna take a little while to run an audit of all the businesses, are we talking a, a large percentage or a small percentage? So that's one question I have. One other question, I was curious about those business fees. I think one was twenty bucks for a downtown business. If I remember looking at the chart, and one was a few thousand dollars for Fred Meyer's.
The business licenses?
No, it was, they said businesses had twenty and some change.
On the grid.
On the grid, on the, on the Excel spreadsheet. So is that charged to each business? I'm just curious, because I've never seen that bill myself. Is it landlord paying?
It's property owners, not.
Is it property owners?
Property owners.
So a property owner, say like where I'm at, I'm in the Graham building, would get a fee per tenant, or would it be just a fee for the building? I'm just curious how that works.
No, so what it is, is the fee is billed to the, to the landowner. For the person on, essentially on the title. So for Fred Meyer, it would be based on whoever owns that complex. The bill, just like with an apartment, the bill goes to the owner of the apartment complex. And then the apartment can then choose to either pass that fee on to its residents or not.
But is it like a per-tenant, per-unit basis, or is it?
For apartments, yes.
Or what about for businesses?
For businesses, it's just based on the building, if memory serves.
So, I mean.
Jamie, come, go ahead.
I can speak to that. I, I spent some time looking at the code, and it was adopted by ordinance. That, that number is per vehicle trip. And the vehicle trip is assigned to businesses. And it's, it's not as straightforward as it seems, which is why when we talk about that it might take some time to audit the program, it's because it's not just your downtown business, so you have this many vehicle trips. You know, somebody who might seem like their retail could actually be classified as wholesale. And I'm not exactly sure how those vehicle trips are assigned other than probably by the code when somebody licensed their business. But so that point five-two-two is per vehicle trip, and the vehicle trip depends on the business.
Okay, so.
And nonprofit.
So just to, just to, I'm trying to get an example of something I know, which is, I, I lease out of the Graham building. Paul Graham pays a fee, and I don't know if you can disclose what he does or not. He hasn't told me what he pays, anyway. But the, but that fee is calculated based on an assumption of how many people visit it every day? And that, that, is that ever?
Square footage.
It's square footage.
Square footage, and then whatever category.
So, so basically, the square footage determines?
So the definition, the definition in the code says for the non-residential fee, the street maintenance fee shall be calculated by multiplying the number of units set by category of use by the trip rate per unit for that assigned category of use, and then by the monthly per-trip charge of five, five point, point five-two-two to establish the monthly fee to be billed.
I'm just, yeah, it doesn't quite, I'm just trying to say, if I wanted to buy a commercial building, how would we, how would that, so is it square foot is the proxy for the trips? Or is there some other analysis that's done that says, are we like maybe seeing somebody once every fifteen minutes, which increases the cost? Or if we're all sitting in our building doing nothing for, I mean, not nothing, but not going back and forth for the whole day, is it a smaller cost? Is that reevaluated at any time? Or is that just something that, can I just guess at? I don't know. I'm just, I'm curious.
So one of the things that the, that, that has to be taken into account is the number of trips that are generated by a particular land use. And there are like twelve different categories or something like that of land use. And so that hasn't been consulted.
Okay, so, so right now, it's a kind of a mystery. So like if I were to purchase the Graham, I'm not, I'm not gonna plan to purchase it, but I'm saying just hypothetically, or any other commercial downtown building, I would get a charge, probably just based on what was charged before. And it's like I said, I know some of our building, the tenants change. Some tenants have a lot of traffic, some don't. My business doesn't have a lot of traffic most of the year, but this time of year I have a lot of traffic. And I'm just wondering what kind of logic, or if there's a better logic that can be developed to, to be able to give, explain what it should be. I think that's maybe why we're not sure everybody's done right. Because I don't, not getting any good exam, answer to the question of just how do you, how do you, how do you assess the fee? So I guess it was that, that issue. So I was wondering if that, maybe an answer could be given on that so that I can like at least figure out what's going on with the businesses. So the other question I have, sorry, just got different questions I wrote down while I was doing.
Okay.
So I have a house here in Canby, and what if I decide not to pay the street fee? What happens to me? Or I can't, maybe I just don't have the money, or I don't want it, or what happens to me?
How's that enforced?
We don't pave in front of your house.
No.
I'm just, I'm just curious, because obviously we're raising a, and I know you guys don't like calling it a tax, but in my mind, it's a tax because everybody has to pay it, right? And so if we're gonna do that, the question always comes that somebody may, may not be able to afford whatever thing we raise it to. And so the question I have, and I, I think I talked to Eileen about this a few, a little while ago, is what, what happens to me? I just use me as an example, if I didn't pay the, the street fee, start shorting the city on the bill. What, what would happen? What is the enforcement mechanism? And so what's the consequence for someone who can't pay the fee? It's a question that I think, I think, I think should be discussed in public because.
I don't know how payments are applied here in other cities that I've worked for. If somebody doesn't pay a whole portion of their fee or of their utility bill, there is an order of payment applied. And so the water in, in cities that have a water system, the water is the last applied payment so that you can shut off somebody's water if they don't pay.
But right now, it's a sewer fee, so you're not gonna shut down my sewer. And you probably don't want to either. That would create a worse hazard.
Right.
So I can tell you, the way it is written in the code is that when someone pays their money to the city, it first is applied to the street maintenance fee. It is then applied, should then be applied to the park maintenance fee, and then it should be applied to their water bill.
Yeah, but what if I don't pay it?
And they don't pay, and they end up in the rears, then the city puts a lien on their house. And when the home is sold, or the businesses or the building is sold, then the city gets its money at that point in time.
It is, okay. So in that case, what we are actually doing, at least in my mind, is it's a, it's a type of property tax. Because obviously, the, the consequence for not paying it is the same consequence of me not paying my property tax, which is a lien gets put on the house, and we get sold that way. So I, I don't know, I just thought that'd be, I just wanted to discuss that, see if my logic is, is correct, that this is actually, I know there's legal, I know attorney, you know, give me a bad eye, but the, it's really a type of property tax, because in the end, if you don't pay it, it gets, it gets put on a lien, just like, just like a regular property tax, okay? So, and that, and so if somebody can't pay it, or for some reason couldn't pay it, the city would just collect the money when the house is sold later on. Just within, within, with, with, with whatever interest. Can the ordinance be, another question I have, so different subject. Can the ordinance be written so that it indexes to inflation? Is that something, or do we have to just meet every year and say?
Yeah, like our parks maintenance fees.
So the ordinance could be modified in a way the council chooses.
Could we just pass it and say it'll be this dollar amount? And then every year, it'll go up based on the consumer price index? And, and bake it into the system so we don't have to redo this every, every ten years?
Yeah, it would be my recommendation that the methodology gets baked into the ordinance, but the actual amount gets set by resolution, so they're incorporated into the master fee resolution.
Okay, so that, so that is one thing. The, and then the other thing, it was good. The street fund right now has some legal restrictions, I think you mentioned earlier. It's between the curbs, and that's all only.
The street maintenance fee does.
Yeah, the street maintenance fee.
Yeah.
Okay. So a couple, now that I've gotten some information, just a couple of opinions, now that I've gotten information. One, I just wanted to point out that I, my opinion is that the fee should be set on what's needed, not on what was missed, because in the accounting, we have something called the sunk cost fallacy, where you don't, you don't base your, your accounting on what could have happened, but you put it on what's needed going forward. So as far as the whole lost revenue thing, I think that shouldn't be part of the equation. It should be just questions of what is needed going forward. The other thing is increasing the business fees by a dramatic amount, business license fees, I think would probably hurt the transit more than anything else, because the business license fee is not a hundred, it's not a fifty dollars per year. It's fifty dollars plus, hey, now you gotta pay tons of extra tax as well. And so I think it might be discouraging people from getting into the transit tax system. So that's something to be aware of if you're, at least I see it on my end all the time, where I say, well, should you get a business fee? And so, yeah, you probably should, Canby wants you to get a, a business license. But remember, if you get a business license, basically that comes with an annual bill that's on top of the business license, as a practical effect. Just so we realize that it may be, you know, killing the goose, you know, to get the eggs, because if you have a lower price, it could encourage more people to be licensed, and then you get some more money on the transit fee. So, and the other thing, of course, is that businesses in general, if they're well-run, don't pay taxes, their customers pay taxes. And so obviously, if you raise the fees too much, you're gonna be raising fees on the customers of the business, because we pass our costs on if we're a well-run, well-run business. So that also wants to be, I think should be addressed when we're deciding what fees we're gonna charge. Now, obviously, gotta make it fair. Obviously, Fred Meyer probably should pay more than me for their fees. But just to remember that if you get too greedy, it's just gonna, just gonna have to be reflected. to have to be reflected in the prices that the businesses charge. And then that being said, also, I think that I am quite curious as to find out how much businesses may be, money might be lost due to miscategorization, but I think, listening to this from one of your answers earlier, maybe that miscategorization might be baked into the complexity of the system, whereas a little bit simpler system, maybe just based on square foot, which, you know, isn't perfect, but, you know, trying to figure out how many, in a, in a building that changes tenants all the time, how many people come and go from each type, will probably always be really difficult to implement in a way that's fair. So, sir, thank you for indulging me, I know there's a lot of things, but.
Counselor, I've had to review the non-residential fee methodology many times in my head, just to understand what, what the formula is. So it is a difficult formula.
So I think a better formula would be probably do two things. One, it may solve the problem of the miscategorization, just to have a simpler, simpler thing that at least I, in my, I can understand. And, and then I could, we could tell other people, hey, this is, this is how you calculate it. Maybe it's square footage, maybe, you know, like, you know, Columbia Distributing is a little bit bigger than, you know, than my house, and so they might, and you can justify for a bigger that way. But make it simple, so we can just, you know, five people could go look at it and get the same, same number each time, instead of having five people go and probably give you wildly different assessments, you know? So those are my suggestions. And I personally wouldn't have any problem raising it up to the 750-ish range, just because that, that satisfies the original intent, and it gets the costs the same. Also, if it's going to be a greater cost, I highly suggest that it be done in small increments per year, instead of all at once. Although we talk about businesses advocating for the higher fee, but the businesses, in my mind, don't pay taxes, but the residents do. And so you have people that may not afford it, but if they can see it coming and say, hey, we know it's going to go up a little bit more each year, that we get to the right amount, it allows people who run a budget to prepare. But I found that consulting businesses and such, we always advocate for a gradual price increase, rather than a shocking one-time, oops, now you pay triple, or, you know, then even if it's the price is just, just the shock of increasing it by that much can make it really difficult for those who are budgeting. And also, even if you have the money, it can give you like a bad taste in your mouth, like what the heck's happened? I just got my, my fees tripled. It doesn't matter whether, what the amount is, it's just a tripling seems to have that effect on, or the doubling on people psychologically. So I guess I don't optimize a whole building.
Well, counsel, I wanted to make sure that I ran these numbers, so you could see what the impact would be at the various rates on, on an annual basis, as well as a monthly basis. So, you know, I was working on this, this weekend, just so, you know, this was before I knew that the task force had rescinded its recommendations, so it's just a matter of timing. I was working from the November minutes and what I thought were the, were the, the recommendations of the task force, so.
Counselor President Hensley, and then Counselor Davis.
Thank you. I, I agree with Counselor Sterns that we need to go with whatever amount going forward and not try and recapture lost money due to, you know, inflation and whatnot. But my, my biggest struggle here is, yes, the buck does stop with us, and we don't have an accurate forecast. So their original recommendation was based off of an erroneous forecasted revenue. So any recommendation they were working with, that's why they rescinded it, it's not valid. And at the end of the day, it's irresponsible for us as policymakers to just arbitrarily pick a number based on an erroneous, in revenue forecast. So I want to know, how, are you actively working on this audit and when is it going to be completed?
I think we can have it completed by late summer, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the other piece was that you had sent the code and the, the ordinance to the task force with the ask that they go over it and make sure, in your words, is making a complete set of recommendations. That never occurred, because they haven't met again since that November 13th meeting. So they haven't adopted the minutes, they haven't had this discussion, they didn't have accurate information. I don't think we can move forward with any recommendation at this point.
Well, and that's, that's my recommendation as well, that you don't move forward with anything until we can get the work done. As I said, the, the street fund will be balanced without this new revenue. So that's my recommendation, is that you take the time, that we take the time, and make sure that we give you, we, you know, this, this has been a good discussion, you know, various questions have been asked, so I'm glad we brought you this update tonight. Wanted to hear your recommendation and answer those additional questions that you have and, and make sure that it does get done right. The other thing that I'm, you know, that we need to do here is notify, there will be a process involved in notifying residents, residences and businesses that their street maintenance fee is going to go up by whatever the decision is made. That's going to take a bit of effort, too, so.
Counselor Davis, and then I'll come, Counselor Waterman.
Thank you. What is the question we're trying to answer tonight?
There is no question that we're answering tonight. It was more of an update.
Okay.
On, this is where the task force and staff have worked to, to this point.
Okay.
Here's the information at hand, there's no motion, there's no consensus. This was purely an informational piece for us to get brought up to speed on what's been deliberated, talked about, you know, over pizza or whatever, and brought here to us this evening to get up speed.
Okay, so I think, Jason, thank you for your presentation. I think it's, it's clear that we're way behind in revenue. And I totally understand your point in regards to the fact that it would be irresponsible for us not to increase. But the question I have for the taxpayers or for the residences, as well as the businesses, is what is it we're going to spend the money on? You know, that would be the first question that I would ask. What is it we're spending the money for? What's the projects that you have slated? And do we need that much money? I mean, I agree, you know, that we're behind, but what is it we're spending the money on? Is what I would ask. The other part, question I had too, how do we deal with the tax-exempt properties? Do we charge City Hall? Do we charge the police department? Do we charge the fire department? Yes, we do. And that's an essential service. So why are we charging the fire department? There's no choice but for them to run up and down the streets. But that's double taxation. No matter how you look at it, it's double taxation, because the citizens are already paying the bill for the fire department to be there. Now we're spending their money on a street maintenance fee. That doesn't make any sense. And if we're doing that, then we need to charge the police department, because they're an essential service. We need to charge City Hall, because they're an essential service. We need to charge Public Works. Because where do you draw the line? It's okay to charge the fire department and ambulances.
School buses.
And, and school buses.
Charge the school.
When they're, yeah, when they're an essential service. So I think that the whole formula has to be looked at as far as, that we're not ready at this point to make any increases, because to me, it's not fair to the people that are paying the bill today, and the guy across the street may not be paying. We've got people that are paying and some people that aren't paying, because, and I would recommend that late summer is unacceptable to get this answered, because Jason brings up a very good point of how far we are behind in revenue, that there's enough revenue, potentially, we need to know what the projects are. Do we need that money? How much money do we need? But then, at, at that point, too, is we need to look at who we're charging and how we're charging, and not charging tax-exempt or essential services, like police and fire. You know, police isn't being charged, but fire is. But we need to know what that is, because it's not fair for the guy across the street not to pay the bill, just because they don't have a business license, or we don't know about them. So do we hire somebody to come in and do that work? Because we've got city employees that have their normal job to do, and so do we hire in somebody, a consultant, to deal with this specifically, in regards to getting this straightened out rapidly, so that we can address this in the budget process?
Counselor Waterman?
So from, one of the questions I have, based on the information with the street quality and so forth, and, you know, it's going down a little bit every month and so forth, or each year. If we did nothing right now and we waited, what actual, how much would that actually hurt the citizens right now? Like, would the streets, like implode and we would not be able to have transportation? Like, if that index dropped in six months to a year, what would, you know, how, how bad would our, would the streets be in six months to a year if we continued with what we're just doing right now?
What we're doing right now, they're dropping three points. I have graphs that I could send you, Counselor Waterman, that show, because it gets to a certain point, and then it starts affecting the road base, and that's what we don't want to get under.
But in, in six months, like.
And, and the thing is, this street maintenance fee has really kept us up in peace and shape. I mean, it's kept us at a 70. So I can't remember exactly what it is. Do you remember, is it at a 50 when it starts? I mean, you can look at, let me give you an example, I think Maple Street, or 10th, 10th Street, I think is at a, what did we say, is that a 42?
Okay.
And so you're going to start, when you start dropping below that, you're going to start getting massive potholes. And then what you have to do is you have, it gets more expensive, you have to deep base it out. It just adds cost and less overall paving. It's just cheaper to do the, I don't want to bring up slurry seals or get into that, but to do road protection, keep your, keep your, like having a good roof on your house, keep it sealed. But no, you're not going to see anything drastic over six months, but it's just going to be a slow decline on everything.
Right. Because I see, it seems like we have a short-term obstacle right now. It should be a short-term obstacle in getting the information to figure out this, this audit, right? So if we wait, if we were to wait six months to get the audit, the audit, to me, is less of a concern right now than this proposal of waiting possibly to even do an increase until we redo the whole formula. To me, that's a bigger issue.
Yeah.
Than getting an audit, because that's, that's like another year. So, so that, that's kind of my biggest issue. I don't, me personally, three months, six months, I don't necessarily have an issue in making sure that we get the audit done, because we're not voting on anything right now, anyway. I would be okay with that. I don't think that people are really going to notice a difference driving around in a couple of months, to make sure we get some information. I am concerned about, I think we have to do something, once we do get that information, and then look at redoing the formula, et cetera, if we're planning on doing that, so.
Counselor Waterman, I just give you some quick history. Like, if you take Fourth Avenue right over here, when I started, we, we paved in-house, because we didn't have any money. And we had $60,000 a year to pave. And that's a street, you can drive it, I paved that. And it's holding up good. And what happened was, is there, they didn't use recycled asphalt back then either. Now they're doing the recycle, so it doesn't hold up as good, because they want to be, you know, eco-friendly and everything else. So this newer asphalt, the more they mess with that, too, the more decline we start to see on how long they last. I mean, that street's 20 years old, and it looks better than some of these streets we paved 10 years ago. But I have a lot of information on this, and I would love to share it if you ever want it. I got a full book. It, it goes through all the, where it breaks off, or where we were making a bad investment. It shows where the best, you know, where we should be, what they recommended. And basically, going into this, they, it's kind of, I don't know who said it, if it was, I think it was Counselor Sterns, is like, what does the council want our PCI to be at? And then you look at the money there. And then, as far as projects, list, Counselor Davis, we had this, this consultant come in and scan all the roads, and they base it off there, and it shows what roads to pave every year. So we have an ongoing list that we don't go, sorry about your comment about your house, Counselor Sterns, but we don't know where you live, you know? Oh, I do, because I gave you a ride home. But, but we, it, it goes, and I've been in trouble, actually, for paving at counselors years ago, I think I got in trouble for paving in front of Counselor Ayers's house, and I didn't even know where he lived. So it goes off this list, you know, of where you pave on, on that. So the projects, it lays out the money aspects of how much money you get, this is how high you can overlay, and then it, when you actually get more money, too, you get ahead of it, and you get more preventative maintenance, you spend less on deep base construction, stuff like that. So anyone that wants that information, I'm willing to put together a book for them. It's really boring and everything else, but it's all in there. And it has all of, everything, and the best thing about it is got Jason Patton, Counselor Patton's handwriting in it from 2008 of him doing stuff like this. And so it's, I've, I've been able to compile all that information, so if that's helpful for you, please.
I'm just trying, I just want to make sure that we're balancing need versus immediate request versus what's the overall actual impact, short-term right now. For to say, we know, long-term, we need the money. I mean, we need more money. So if, in the short-term, how we go about getting that and making sure our ducks in a row, I don't see where another three months is going to make a difference over the last five years. It's going to take us five years, even if we went the highest amount, it's going to take us five years just to get to the index we want.
Yeah, the, Counselor Waterman, the Public Works Department just appreciates having the fee. I mean, having it just puts us ahead of other cities. So we just want to make sure and not jeopardize what we have. And if we can get this all fixed and wrapped up, it's even better for us, so.
Counselor President Hensley?
First, to Counselor Davis's point, I just wanted him to know that, that, that essential services was brought up at the last November 13th meeting. And I remember, in fact, I re-watched the meeting a couple of times since, and you did say, let's put that in the notes in the minutes, so we can revisit that formulation, and it's not in the minutes. So I know that Rhonda's not here, but her computer is, so that's one that the error was, that's one of the errors in the minutes. So I wanted to clarify that, that we did bring that up.
Remember that, we'll, we'll both remember that and add that.
When they finally get to meet again and.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then to Eileen, initially, this audit was supposed to take two months. It's been almost four, and now we're needing another five. I'm just wondering, why is it going to take so long?
Because as I got into the details of understanding the non-residential fee and how it's calculated, and then looking at the number of accounts that we have, I just, and the number of inputs into the formula, whether it's a business license, square footage comes from that, but then it moves into our financial system of CASL, there's a number of inputs into the system, and I just knew that it was going to be more complicated than it, than it, than I thought it would take.
Okay, and you said, by end of summer, how, can we have a ballpark, when you think this would actually.
I said late summer.
Late summer, okay.
Counselor Sterns, and then Counselor Patton.
I appreciate the comments, and I think I've been educated more about this issue tonight. I'm going to make a suggestion that hopefully Counselor Hensley and Counselor Patton won't be upset at me. And that's just me being maybe selfish, but I would like, if possible, to have the council. I, I mean, I don't necessarily think there's anything to lose, like you said, for maybe three months, but I want to have pressure by the council to get this thing done, even if we have to do some extra work sessions or something. What I, what I really don't want to see, and like I say, it's just me being selfish, is, is to hear the words, it'll go to a committee, and then have it die for a year, and then come back again, and we'll be saying the same things, you know, this time again next year. So my suggestion is that we, we push it, but we push it as a council. And I, and if the other people want, that were in the committee want to give input, we can have them give input in a work session, but I, but I don't want to hear the, we'll give it to committee, and that's the best way to kill an idea, I think, is, is to give it to committee, not, just because I want to get it done sooner, rather than, than have to worry about an intermediary group. get it done sooner rather than, than have to worry about an intermediary group that says, here's the recommendation. I just, I don't know, I like to make my own recommendations.
This was a passionate group who was eager to get something done.
Oh, I know.
And they were upset.
Yeah, I know, I've talked to some of them. They were, they're definitely passionate about it, but I'm just, like I said, I wanted, I'm starting to feel, I'm starting to feel the passion myself.
So I'm just trying to, so are you saying, you know, great, thank you, Road Maintenance Fee Task Force, we appreciate the work, we'll take it from here?
I want to say, we'll take it from here, but I also want to say that, come join us, and like at a work session or something too, because I'd like to hear their inputs. I mean, but that's the thing, but I don't want to say, what I don't want to see is, here, here's a nice issue, give it to committee, and then two years. And the reason why I say that is because I, you know, since I got on council, I wanted this to happen. And then it seems like every time I come up with it, it's, it's like, it's in committee, which me being, you know, selfish or outside, maybe it's better for you two on the committee, then you can see what's going on. But for me, I'm just sitting there saying, it's gonna come out of the committee sometime, you know? But I'd rather just as a council, push, push as a council. And okay, we want all the citizens' input that they wanted, either tell me in private or, or in public, but we want to, but I think that we should just push in with it. So like, there's, I think there's, we've identified a couple of things. One, of course, this audit. Two, I think the formula needs to be changed, just because otherwise we'll just be scratching our heads from every, every, every year, like, did we do that right? I mean, and then just make something simpler, like square footage or something. And I agree, obviously, I don't want to double tax people. If we're gonna tax somebody, we better tax the school, they got the most square footage. But still, the, but not, but there's no point in charging the taxpayer multiple times. That doesn't make any sense, I'm just joking about that.
So, sorry. People lining up. Counselor Patton, and then Counselor President Hensley.
Oh, no.
Oh, you're good, okay.
So I will say this. I have been involved with a street maintenance fee since the first committee meeting in 2006. I have, even as a concerned citizen, when I had no power at all, would meet with Jerry to make sure that the money was being used properly, would come into these meetings, and I would stress the importance of dealing with this. And every time I did it, it was like, oh, here's crazy Jason, ask, just, just, let's move on, right? And here I sit on the council, and some folks laugh, and I don't, and I don't think my body posture lets you know how absolutely agitated I am that that continues to this day. The reason this fee was created was because the city's streets were failing. It was the responsibility of the council to ensure that this program worked. And they let it essentially die on the vine. And this is one of the things, when I was running for council, when I was on the Budget Committee, whatever, this was something that I wanted to see rectified. If the council continues to kick the can down the road, that's their prerogative. But I will not be silent about this, something needs to be done. And as far as the task force is concerned, I, my clams are pretty steamed about that whole thing as well, because I won't get into the details of it, but I was appointed as the council liaison to this group. And they purposefully did not include me in any of the communications regarding these meetings that they wanted to have. But they included Trace Council President Hensley. So why am I one of the foremost people on this very thing next to Jerry, the one being iced out of this? I have my theories, but not anymore. I am going to make sure, whether I have to fillet myself on this dais, that this gets done so that Jerry can do his work, and so that those community members who complain about our streets will, they won't stop complaining, but they might not complain as loud. So there you go.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Waterman?
The work that has already been done by the task force should, is very, still valid. The only difference is, is what the initial information, initial number was that they were working off of. So once we get the more accurate information, you're only making a decision on what's the difference. If we're gonna, if it's gonna be more money, how much more money? If it's less money, how much less? That's really all that we're gonna have, that we're gonna decide at the end of reevaluating what that audit information's gonna give. I don't understand the, it's like, is it gonna come up with some new information, it's either there's more money or less, and based on the original recommendations, how much does that need to be adjusted with the new information? So it shouldn't be another year, it shouldn't be another, you know, five sessions of, of task force meetings and so forth. So it seems like it should be pretty straightforward, just making, adjusting the current recommendation, which is a dip, one point, a different set of numbers. So that's, that's my input on that.
Let's move forward. So, let me see if I can do this. Emily, and Eileen, and Jerry. So we have, we'll say we have a rough framework here in terms of the numbers that came up with, by the task force. So we, as a council, can not do anything, leave it as it is, wait for the audit to be done, and then task force can meet, and so on and so forth. Or we go ahead, as a council, decide that, I don't know, $22 is where we want to go, and then find out from the audit, sorry, I'll use the numbers that are here, say we go to 1343, go through the audit, we find out, sorry, 1343, put the, you know, the in, the consumer price index on it each year, and then the audit gets done, and we find out that, oh gosh, you know, we're actually, what we're collecting from the street maintenance fee based on what we found out is more than what we originally thought. So, right, so those are what I'm hearing as potential, what we're looking at. Okay, so, and if I remember correctly, every June, the council gets a 15-page document of all of the fees and things that are listed, that get turned over automatically starting July 1. Is that correct? Okay. So could, in that instance, that, using just this one line item, that's called out on that fee sheet, right, based on what is the consumer price index? Right? So maybe it's a 4% increase or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, it's no different than the park maintenance fee, it's already adjusted by the CPI.
Okay. So we could move forward as a council on said dollar amount based on what's been discussed already. And if we do find that that's the case, that we've reached, gone through the audit, there's more money coming in for the next budget year based on the new calculations, could the council then decide as a line item in that fee sheet not to assess the CPI that year, or the consumer price bump that year, until, or even two years, if it's truly that kind of money?
It would just be removing the CPI from the formula.
Right, so, yeah, so if we instituted the 1343, but gosh, found out that really we could have gotten away with 12, then we just don't increase it each year, right? Or for a year or two years?
Or, or you just achieve, yeah.
Again, I'm just, you know, I get it, I play mayor, you know, here on the chair, and, you know, too many football head injuries or whatever, but I'm just trying to, you know, I'm trying to look at it going, because, yeah, we're, I mean, we're not gonna catch up. We have to draw the line in the sand and say, okay, we gotta move, we gotta move something forward.
Well, given that Jerry's PCI index is as low as it is, you know, if you charged 1343 and you adjusted it by CPI every year, I mean, you can see what the impact is on, you know, the typical customer, but it's just that much more revenue that is, you know, that you can actually maybe get to a higher PCI index as well.
No, I understand that. And I get the outcome that we're trying to get to. My, my question has to do with more of the methodology to keep, to get this moving forward, you know, in that great council, as Counsel Patton said, we, we put on our big boy and big girl pants, we move forward with it, that at some point, we can look at the annual fee sheet and go, well, we're ahead of the game, we don't need to take an, you know, the, the increase this year.
As a counselor, I would recommend, instead of removing the, the CPI inflated, increase, we reduce the fee.
Exactly.
That's fine, I'm, I'm, that's fine, I said.
That's how I think you would do that. Because if you remove the CPI, then we end up 20 years from now in the same boat.
And I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm just throwing something out there on the table to be talked about and just thought of in that regard, because, you know, yes, does six, does, you know, four months make a big deal? Maybe, maybe not, probably not, in the grand scheme of things and the way that government wheels grind as slow as they do. But it's still the process of the conversation going, something's gotta be factored in and done. I mean, $600,000 that we're budgeting for '25, '26, Jerry?
Six, yeah.
Six and change.
Yeah, and this year, we're just gonna do some slight paving.
Yeah, so six and change, and then six and change the next year, providing we don't, if we don't do anything, then you've got one, you know, you're over the million-dollar threshold, which is a better buying power. However, we're not, we're gonna do .3 miles of center paving line, which is, what? I mean, that's, that's a, I think, my street, you, my street.
Do yours, yeah.
I, these guys can, we can pave mine, so. So I, again, I'll just leave that out there, again, as, putting that as a...
Four months is not a big time to wait, but it is, but four months is not, is too long to sit around doing nothing about it.
Well, that's, I think that's my point, is we don't do anything, we stay where we're at, but is there something, what's the something?
To move the discussion forward, to talk about the issues like what the fee is, what the, sorry. What the fee is, the methodology, obviously, I think, needs to be looked at. If no one can figure out what it really means, then we have to make it simpler, so that's the aspect of making it simpler. And then when we come up with a number, it says we want street paving number to be this, how do we get there? Do we get it in one jump, or a gradual jump? Those are the issues, and I think we need to keep talking about them, and not just say, oh, we talked about them in April, and then, then, then back in October, I say, can we bring the subject up again? I want to make sure that we're, it's in front of everybody constantly. Now, it's gonna take four months before we're done, that's fine, but I don't want to say four months from now, we'll start where we were today.
Okay, so I'm gonna take our, the race car off the track here for a moment and go. So the objective for tonight with this topic was to give an update on where this conversation is at and whatnot, and I think that that has been achieved, yes? Okay. Now, in terms of what's next, you know, it, I mean, am I putting this on the agenda for further, for putting a number out there to move forward? Or are we just gonna wait until staff has done their, their work for the next four months at that point? Counselor Patton?
I would like to see, at minimum, it, a decision be made sooner, a decision be made to at least tie the current fee to the consumer price index, increase, increase.
Okay.
For the next fiscal year. At medium, that plus increasing the fee to what it should be if we had not had, if, if it was originally tied to inflation, which I think was the $7 in some odd cents. That's, that is what I would, I would prefer to see. At minimum, the CPI, well, at, at the minimum, yes, that. At medium, the CPI, and getting it, getting the fee at least up to where it should have been with CPI since 2009.
And that's, we know that this is that 7, 746 that's here?
That's, that's, if we...
Close, not close.
Yeah.
Like our parks fee is at like 649 or something, and it was...
Google told me 723, but I, it's a date.
At the high, I would like us to, and something that I had recommended to, I had thrown out as an idea to the task force, which some were interested in but others were not, was doing a smaller increase over the course of a five-year period to get it up to where it really should, to be, to get it up to, essentially, I think it was like, if you do a 35% increase over the course of six years or something like that, you would actually end up getting it up to the $13, or something along those lines. So there were options, there were ways of increasing the fee over time and set a sunset on it, that when it hit that, like, after the seven-year period, it would, it would stop going up at that higher rate, and then just be tied to the CPI.
Well, I think we can probably agree to go to the inflation level as a start, and then later on, we can revisit the results from the audits and that sort of thing, whether a further increase is necessary. But if we say, what I don't like is saying, we have to get it perfect or we can't do anything at all. I like to say, well, we can maybe, maybe, I don't know, agree on that step, and then if we need, another step needs to take, and maybe it's more controversial, then we can, we can, we can put that out. But I, I think having something not indexed to inflation means it's a cut every year, which is, I think, has been demonstrated. And if that's what we want to do, we just need to tell, tell CAMB, we want, we want your roads to be worse, and so we're keeping it the same. Because that's, in essence, what happens when you don't index, because, because dollar amounts are not worth the same every year, it's just, so that's, that's what I would think we could have as a, as a motion to start out with. And then after that, we can have a lot of discussion whether needs to go up further, simplify the definitions for businesses, so that can be more easily, you know, done. And those all could be separate steps, doesn't have to be everything into one, one motion that will probably pick apart and debate forever anyway.
I would be 100% behind, starting with CPI.
Starting with the CPI.
Okay, any other thoughts on that, before we, because I want to, yeah, I want to move on to the next agenda item unless there's more. Yes, Emily, hi.
Just a quick check-in. So you adopt your fees via resolution, procedurally, you can do that again, and you can do it as many times as you want to, given this tiered approach I'm hearing, talked about right now. The one thing we just have to keep an eye on is that anytime you vote to increase or create a new kind of fee, there, a part of that meeting has to be an opportunity for the public to come in and comment on that.
Right.
It doesn't need to be a full public hearing, but we just need to make sure there's...
Absolutely.
Comments elicited.
No, I think, I, yes, Eileen and I have had that conversation, that, I mean, at, at the bigger end would be doing a public, I mean, truly do, like a public hearing piece on the matter, I think, which we generally do with the fee, the fees every year is, is a public hearing piece. So, no, yes, thank you for putting that out there, so. Okay, so I, I think, I think Eileen and team, and, and Eileen and I will look at the next agenda and look at what, what type of a motion to bring forward or, or whatnot. So, I mean, I'm seeing at least CPI as a, as a first piece. Counselor Davis?
I'd like to add it in there, again, fire to be exempt from it. Because that, no matter how you look at it, that's, it is double taxation.
So to that point, the reason that FIRE and those other folks are not exempt is because, this did come up during the original task force. And the concern was that if a carve-out is given to one group, then another group is going to want one, and another group is gonna want one, and then eventually... and then eventually the, the whole system is eroded because there will be a ton of carve-outs, and then more will fall on a smaller group of people. Um, that just, you can take it as you will. That is just the reason why the original committee chose not to exempt anybody. Now, I, yes, the committee did bring this up, and there was talk about, you know, should this, if, if that's the case, and the decision is, you know, do you forego giving up all of that money to the Fire Department and churches and nonprofits and seniors and senior living centers and so on and so forth? Or does the city then figure into its budget that it needs to pay into the street maintenance fee program based on the size of its buildings? And for me, I would rather see the city pay into the fee rather than anybody be exempt.
So, Eileen, is this where I share our conversation last night about double taxation for me going to the grocery store?
You could.
No, I won't. Okay, did you have something else you wanted to add to that?
Uh, no, I, either, either all tax-exempt properties pay or they don't. You know, I mean, I agree with Jason that, uh, I would rather have everybody pay, including the city of Canby. Uh, and if the Fire Department falls into that, they have to pay too. Or that, it can be argued too, Jason, though, that that is an essential service. There is no choice. The, the red trucks have to go down the street. You know, where a church, I know, you, you could argue that all day long. They don't, they don't have to do that.
And you could just say, "Government entities are exempt." So that way you don't have to worry about the nonprofits and all that stuff because, because of the double taxation standards.
Right.
Um, so obviously the churches aren't taxing people, um, in the first place. But the Fire Department, I did pay a bill to the Fire Department when I did my proper tax. I did one to the school and the mosquitoes and the Port of Portland, although I wouldn't mind if you charged them the fee, but still.
So not to complicate the issue further, but this is where we get into the ITE manual and how different categories are defined, how different land uses are defined. And so, you know, I was surprised looking at them that, um, you know, like a drive-through, a fast food restaurant without a drive-through is actually in a higher trip rate than a fast food restaurant with a drive-through. You know, so, um, you know, if we keep the current ITE manual and the designations that are in that, um, it, there are some weird calculations as well, but-
Yeah, that's, goes back to the whole formula thing that-
Right.
Yeah, that's a conversation for-
That might be down the line in terms of clarifying the ITE manual, which one is used. So right now, it's the 2008 ITE manual, maybe the 2018.
So, Councilwoman proposed this, because it sounds like there's, and maybe it's, it is clear-cut, and I'm not sure. But to me, it seems like now potentially future agenda item, two, two potential items. One is for this group to figure out of the three things that maybe were laid out by Council Patton, which one do we have in, uh, the, the desire to move forward with in, in total, right? The minimum, medium, or the high piece? And then the other conversation that the council needs to have is whether or not, you know, a Fire District is exempt or all government agencies pay, including the city. I mean, those seem like two separate budget item, or, sorry, um, agenda items that I'm trying to get my mind wrapped around. Is that, are you all seeing here in the same way?
Well, then the other one is how are we calculating businesses that should be addressed?
Well, that's part of the-
Yeah.
That's the audit.
Audit piece that they're working on, right, so that's-
No, I, I think the audit piece should say whether or not things have been classified correctly, and then also suggest, address the issue, is there a better way? Because I, I, my suspicion now from talking today is there might be a better way.
Well, and to that point, when Canby implemented its street maintenance fee in 2009, it was one of only a handful in the state or the country that was doing such a thing. And so, men, so maybe it's time that we look at, and now many cities have this fee. Perhaps it is time for us to look at what other cities use as a mechanism to calculate this stuff and learn from them, like they've learned from us when we implemented our fee.
So that particular piece, I'm gonna say, you need to write that down because when we do a city goal session again, that would be a perfect opportunity to bring that up and say, "Here's a goal that I think the city council should push for."
Is it too late?
It is too late, yes. We've already approved our goals for this year and probably most of next year. So, okay, all right. Eileen and I will work on these next two pieces that I think I've got for us to go forward on. Okay. Jerry, thank you. I knew we were gonna open up a can of worms. I just didn't think it would be quite the big can. So, thank you, I appreciate, and I appreciate the dialogue with everybody up here. Um, for those of you at home watching and the two people that are here, this is why we sit in the big chairs and make the big bucks. So, okay. Um, now we're gonna move on to a lesser controversial topic. Item B under new business is the Maple Street Park improvements. Uh, and I think that's, Eileen, oh, and Jerry again.
And Jerry again.
It's a Jerry evening, okay. I think we should bring Spencer up here just so that he can at least come up here.
I was trying to get him up here on 10th, but-
Can I, can I play the mayor card and then say that the mayor directs him to come up here to the microphone?
Sure could.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Spencer.
How about Ryan, too?
No, I don't need Ryan.
Because Ryan's, Ryan's actually more appropriate on this one, because he's on our Parks Advisory Committee.
Are you saying that Spencer's inappropriate?
Yeah, okay, so, all right. So, let's dive into this one.
Yeah, um, so, um, councilors and mayor, we, um, our Parks Advisory Committee made a recommendation. Counselor Davis, their liaison, brought it to council. There was some conversation. We were directed to bring it back to talk about improvements to Maple Street Park. We, uh, had $2.2 million budgeted for turf and lighting, which turf's done, lighting's done. We got like one light on order that's coming in. It's almost complete, 99% complete. And the advisory committee is concerned about parking, not having enough parking at Maple.
Okay.
And, um, they want to upgrade the playground equipment. And we had some money budgeted for this fiscal year to do it. And, uh, we're coming to you to see if you want to direct the city administrator to move forward with this project now or if you want to wait till the next budget cycle. Right now, um, all of it is, would be if we started the project now, which it's gonna be hard to get it going. I mean, we got the process to get prices, all that, and then get it through the, um, council process. But anything done this year would be all paid for out of the general fund. And we've had talking about tightening the budget. If we wait until after July 1, a lot of this will be STC-eld. So-
Why would it be STC-eligible then?
Um, we're updating the list. Um, the Parks Advisory Committee's working on a list. They should have that list done coming to us, I think, at our next meeting, um, to bring forward. And that's to do with our Parks Master Plan.
So it's gotta go on the list first before we can-
Yeah, otherwise it's general.
Or scratch a check now out of general fund, okay.
Yeah.
So, tell me about the parking lot, like what's that addition look like? What part of the park?
Um, we've got several options. Um, the one that the advisory committee liked was the, uh, South Parking Lot. I always forget, the South Parking Lot has the little kids playground in it. We removed the little kids playground, put additional parking there, and then combined the playground equipment overall together, so you don't have that separation.
So you said remove. We're not taking that and then trying to move it to the other-
Remove it and then bring in new. The, the playground equipment, it's currently theirs from the 90s. It's old.
If not, I went over there because I just had in my mind that we were gonna try to move it.
Yeah.
And I'm like, there's no way that this 1980s plastic playground structure is gonna handle a move.
Yeah, they liked that. The other option we kind of, um, looked at was the property to the north that we, that grass field and stuff that we purchased years ago, or-
What's wrong with that one?
Um, they liked the, um, they just, it's a, there's more room over there on the, um, south side. It gives you a bigger parking lot.
So we're going deeper on the south side?
Going deeper, just expanding it. And then, um, it kind of leaves that grass area for more maybe future stuff. Cause evos or whatever we look into for what would go in there. So, they, they looked at, they discussed both options. They liked that option. The advisory committee recommended that option.
And we've determined that there is a parking problem there on softball weekends?
Yeah, and this goes, yeah, this goes back to-
I'm just asking the question, Joe.
Right before Rick Robinson left, we were out there looking at parking problems right then. And I don't know what has happened over there. It seems like we're so busy, we always talk about it. We know there's parking issues, but we forget to either budget for it or do something like that. Well, it made it into this year's budget. We just got tied up with Maple. Um, we finally, they finally, they, they were able to come to you to come to, Counselor Davis was able to bring their recommendation to you guys, what, a month ago? Maybe two months ago, and so, um, here we're now to get some direction from you guys to see which direction the group wants to go.
So what is staff's recommendation to do it now or wait until it's part of the SDC plan? Does the staff have a recommendation?
The committee's recommendation, the committee's recommendation is to get the parking started now.
Okay, so that would be out of the general fund?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but what is staff's recommendation? That's what I'm asking.
budgets.
Yeah, given that we're, um, we still need to get engineering on board, is that correct, Jerry?
Yeah, um, yes. We, uh, we're, we're close to, as I keep saying, we're close to getting our engineer record in so we can get this thing designed real quick and get it out to bid if we're directed to. But it's gonna take a little bit of time to get to that point.
So my recommendation, because it is going to take time to get that done, my recommendation would be to wait until the next fiscal year rolls around and we can pay for it out of the SDCs rather than the general fund.
When we say wait, does that include waiting on the engineering piece?
No, no, no.
We could move forward on the engineering aspect.
We could.
Which-
Try to get it all, all wrapped up and approved by council. Then when it, it's out to bid, we could just start July 1.
Right.
Like kind of we did with Maple. Remember, we kind of missed our window with Maple, but we had it ready to go July 1. So work, work as fast as we can, get the engineering going and have it prepared, ready for the first, just as soon as the new budget cycle starts, maybe start work.
Okay.
Is that timeframe even, that's pretty-
It's close.
It's close, yeah.
Okay. Council Paton?
Is this, is this paying for the engineering from general fund money but doing the construction of the actual parking lot with SDC funds in the new fiscal year?
That'd be our plan.
That's your plan. Is that the plan that the Parks Board is advocating for?
Uh, he, well-
Yes and no?
We have to, we have to go through all the projects and we have to add them to the Park Master Plan. And the council has to approve that, and we can do that annually. And so that the Parks Committee has to filter through all the projects that were listed in for the Park Master Plan. And, uh, so I don't know where that would, would fall under the SDCs based upon all the other projects that we're trying to get done.
So that's my next question is, if we pay for this parking lot out of SDC funds, does it ultimately short-change the larger plan that the Parks Board has to use SDC funds for some other project?
Something else would have to drop off.
So essentially something later on down the road would need to come from general fund in order to do it.
Correct.
Or be postponed.
Or postponed. Okay, I guess, I guess for me, I would prefer to see it come from, I would prefer to see the engineering costs come from general fund and then the actual, the actual construction of the parking lot come from SDCs because we are concerned about our general fund balance. So if in five or six years is when the SDC money will be used up and that's when the Parks Board would be like, "Hey, because you spent the money here, now we need general fund money here," that gives us six years to-
Maybe.
Make a game plan to lessen that blow. Whereas if we just pay for it all now, we might be exacerbating the problem short-term. That's where I stand.
So, okay, now I'm, I'm trying really hard to keep, um, things screwed on tight for myself. So why are we having this conversation if this is not even in their plan yet? Can someone explain that to me?
Yeah, they brought it up as a, um, safety issue, the Parks Advisory. It's been brought as a safety issue.
It's been brought here, too.
No, no, I know it has.
Right.
But yet we still have not plugged it into the, the plan.
And, and having it, it's been, like, Brian Potter will say it too, is it can be on the CIP but not SDC-eligible. So-
Right, which means it, well, general fund pays for all of it, yeah. And do we have a thumb target, like, man, it's gonna be about?
I-
It was in the staff report.
$500,000?
Thank you.
The playground's 500.
The playground was 500 and the-
Parking lot was 250,000.
Parking lot was 250,000.
It's, it's been brought up for years, but I don't know why it's never made it on the list.
And how much is the engineering fees cost?
For, uh, for the, uh-
For Maple.
Playground, or for the, um, for the parking lot? I, I want to say around, I mean, I wouldn't think it'd be over 50,000.
Is that for the playground and the parking lot, or?
The, the, the current playground equipment would go through a, um, government pricing, and they would handle the contract. So the engineering would be all, the engineering was all entered into that 500,000 for playground equipment, at the time when we got prices. Does that kind of make sense? So it'd be kind of a separate two-piece type deal.
I am a bigger fan of drawing $50,000 out of the general fund now and so that six years, six or eight years from now, we know that we have to figure out how to pay the $700,000 at the end of something.
Yeah.
Okay, is there, is there up, I mean, as council, yeah, like-
Engineering now, SDC's later.
Okay, so for the next agenda, we'll add that as a make-
Make it so.
And we can make it so on the next agenda.
I think we have the direction.
We can make that, make it so tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's $50,000. What is your limit?
$50,000.
Bam.
So-
I, like, if it's, if I, when I talk to engineering, if it's-
We'll let you know. We'll let you know what it, what the estimate ends up being.
Okay. We'll go get the estimate and then go from there. Great. Check.
We, good, thank you.
I think we're good. Are we good?
I think we're really good.
Did you give us everything we needed to know?
Nope, I'm doing great.
Okay, all right. Okay, excellent. Good conversation this evening. Mayor's business. Um, let me find my long list of things. Oh, yes. Uh, Clackamas County Coordinating Committee is tomorrow evening, so I'll report on that at the next meeting. And then I do have coming up, Region One Area Commission on Transportation. Uh, that is in Monday, the, I think, 14th. Um, so that's all that I have for tonight. Council Paton?
So I just want to thank Jerry and his crew several, I've been neglecting to thank them several meetings ago. I had noticed that the lights around this building were not coming on at night, and I've noticed that they are now. So thank you very much for working on getting that timer, uh, that is extremely complicated, fixed. Um, I attended the Chamber of Commerce luncheon, um, along with some other members of council yesterday. And, um, Ray Keen did a very interesting, uh, presentation about AI in the workplace and kind of what's coming out of that, frightening as heck, but it is what it is. Um, I, the, as far as the Heritage and Landmarks Commission goes, they are on fire. Uh, they are accomplishing all sorts of stuff. It's full steam ahead with them. I will not be able to make their next two meetings. Uh, this month, I am working a boys volleyball match. And then the month after that, I will be at Tiki Caliente in Palm Springs, and I have no interest in messing that up. So we're gonna do that, so I'll, it's gonna be a couple of months before I get back to them, but I will make sure to stay in touch with, with the group. Um, I also wanted to thank, um, Eileen and Chief Trow. I had a citizen that was concerned about some graffiti that they saw in various areas on some buildings, and whether it was gang-related and with- on some buildings, and whether it was gang-related, and within a matter of an hour or so, I had word back from them as to what that was about and that there had already been conversations with the landowners about that. And, you know, everyone, and I've, I've been particularly spicy tonight, so I will not disappoint with my last comment to say that I would like for us to consider moving forward that when we are in executive session, either our cell phones go in a box away from us or laid out on a table somewhere away from us during the duration of the executive session. I have concerns that information during the executive sessions is leaking out through our cell phones, and I am concerned about legal ramifications should that actually be happening. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Councilor President Henley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Traffic Safety Commission, they're going to revisit the speed limit reduction conversation for Darcy State Neighborhood, but that ball just kind of got dropped. We're not really sure with change of chairmans and whatnot, I think it just, it just kind of got dropped. So they're going to be picking that back up. We do have a new member that we just appointed tonight, Mr. O'Brien. And I, and also Commissioner Clint Coleman, we attended the Celebration of Life Memorial for Eric Van Zant, who served on the Traffic Safety Commission for many years as well as other community efforts. He's a, he was a great volunteer of the Big Heart, and he had a lot of work with Canby Fire. There was a good representation from Canby Fire at his service as well, so just wanted to posthumously thank Eric for his service to the community. Jamie just left, unfortunately. I wanted to give her a shout out, French Prairie Forum, her and Tyler always attend that Zoom meeting as well. And I was having connectivity issues and had to Zoom on my phone that night or that afternoon, and I just wanted to say that I had to kick it to her to give the Canby update, and she represented Canby very well. She was, she was great to represent Canby to the regional partners. So yay, Jamie, but she left. And then finally, I attended the Vietnam Veteran Memorial Day Ceremony on March 29th, and I wanted to thank Irene Bashir's and the VFW Post 6057 and the Auxiliary for putting that together, and it was wonderful as usual, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilor Davis.
Okay. Park and Rec, we had the consultant in to talk about Dodge Farm. The Neighborhood Association President was there, and we went over the design for that. So I think we're getting very close. The goal is to hopefully start work after July 1 on that park. So a lot of stuff needs to happen in between now and then as far as coming to council so that you can have a presentation of what that park will look like. They also, it's probably going to be one where we can go through and use that naming of the park that we had approved. So that's going to be interesting. We did have Canby Softball, the Rebels there, again, extremely positive group, working with the Park and Rec Committee. They're extremely grateful for Maple Street Park and the fields, and they just want to be able to help out where they can help out. They're doing field maintenance, things like that for the turf and those type of things. They talked about the need for restrooms at Maple Street Park, especially during tournaments. We told them that we would continue to work with them to get porta-potties out there on known tournaments when they're going to have a lot of people out at the park for their, for their tournaments. I was brought up about master fee schedule. Are we going to be charging for the use of the Maple Street Fields? And there wasn't an answer on that. So hopefully Jerry made a note of that, to bring that forward as far as the master fee schedule for being able to charge for the use of those fields. And then it was also brought up about scheduling. Is, is that something that Canby Softball would do to help out? Because right now, there's no scheduling for those fields. And so, again, that would fall under Park and Rec to, for doing something like that. That wraps up that. I'd like to thank Don Hardy. I did meet with Don in regards to, went over the planning commission stuff for the new adult center. I shouldn't say new, but the movement of the adult center up there. Covered that with Kathy. The, the board seems to be happy with the findings that were put on them in regards or required for the, a new adult center. I too attended the Vietnam Memorial on Saturday. Not, not well attended, but, you know, it's, it's nice to, still honor a lot of veterans that were either in during the time of the Vietnam War or a number of them that actually served over in Vietnam, so. But whoever fixed that, it looked really good. It looked really, really nice, so compliments to, I don't know if it was Public Works, setting up all the flags and everything else, but it was really cleaned up nice, so. And then I just had a, just a question in regards to, I had thought, this is a changing subjects, but when we had the budget overage, I swear I heard that we were going to freeze hiring of employees. At least tell the budget process that that's when we were going to actually deal with the shortfall that the city was experiencing. And I noticed that there were a number of positions being advertised by the city. That makes me a little uncomfortable in regards to moving forward with the hiring until we know exactly where that shortfall is going to land. You know, three million dollars is three million dollars, you know? And so I'm a little uncomfortable with continuing to hire any positions until we deal with the budget process. Because I'd rather deal with the budget process than to have to lay a number of people off after the budget process. So I don't know if the rest of the council feel that way, that we're going to deal with the shortfall and not do the hiring of positions. So I don't know where we're at with that.
I don't remember saying a hiring freeze, but, I mean, I would be curious to know if these positions are because there was, it's like already budgeted position and it's like a critical position or, you know, do it on a case-by-case basis, maybe, but, I mean, ultimately, this is where I'm torn, because now we are, you know, the staffing thing is a, is a city administrator thing, so.
It, it is. I agree with, I agree with Jason, it is a city administrator thing, but it's also us responsible for the taxpayers' money and not having to, I'd rather not have to lay any employees off after hiring.
I will take a look at the positions that we have advertised right now and, and work with the department directors on whether or not they can afford to not hire those positions that are advertised. So.
Councilor Sterns.
Well, I've been pretty busy with doing the taxes, and so I haven't attended all the meetings I should, but tonight, the Canby Utility Board was going to be, to work on getting a new director, because they're still looking for that. And also just wanted to remind people in the city that the, next week, the Canby Utility Board wants to increase their fees they charge us, and they're going to have a hearing on that, so if you have an opinion on paying more for utilities or not, then you should probably go to the meeting and make your voice heard.
When was that?
It's going to be next Tuesday, whatever. Sorry, my mind's too fuzzy with dates.
Eight.
Yeah, eighth, eighth, yeah, so.
Seven PM, about six PM, do you know?
I think it's six PM is when they have their meetings.
Thank you.
And so if you want to make, so I encourage people to do that. Talking with one of the citizens recently, they indicated that they wanted to have a bigger breakdown of what the park maintenance fees monies are being spent for. So I thought it might be a good idea to at least have the, during the budget process to be, create a category for that, so that way, when you're doing all the work of encoding payments, that whatever code you have in your system, you could add an extra code or change the code so that that can be tracked a little bit better. Of course, I explained in that in accounting system, unless, unless you're tracking the payments with a code, then you're not going to be able to get the report needed. So I just thought I'd throw that out. Something that some people want, and I think it's kind of fair, because if you're getting a extra fee that everybody's paying, it's kind of good to know what, what that's going for. And so as a, I know we have an income category, but expense category would be good to have, you know, for the next maybe budget that we can go look and give that report. Last thing on my mind is, I want to just emphasize that I think we should probably devote more council time to the new way of evaluating city administrator that I think we kind of agreed on, but I don't want to let that just fade away. I think we'll push forward on that. And I kind of see that as even more important than finishing the current one, just because of things like, that's a much more productive way of doing the, the evaluations. And that's, I think, all I have to say for now.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, along those lines, I will just let you know that I did some work on the thing that we had talked about last time as far as the process and the goals and all that stuff, broke them out into individual processes. I emailed those to, it was our fiscal year end at work, so my hair is on fire for a number of reasons, that's one. I had just emailed it to date to the mayor.
To Emily.
And to Sally to kind of take a look at. So I was going to say, if, I was going to recommend that if you wanted to do it sooner or later, we have a work session that's scheduled for next Wednesday. Perhaps either doing it sooner and looking over that paperwork to approve, to make adjustments and changes and get it in line with what everybody wants, and then that way, it's ready to go so that when the current review is finalized, we can move into this new process.
Well, next week's work session is the BEH presentation on the ethics piece, right? So that's, that's our two-hour.
We started at seven, yeah?
Okay, I'm just letting everyone know.
So we started at six.
Yeah, that's not going to be enough time.
Okay.
I just wanted to try to get that process moving, because I see it, and I think most people here agreed, at least, that was my reading of the room, is that that would be a much more effective way, because our job as the city council is to direct the administrator, and that way, we have specific things that we can go look and interview and cheerlead on and do things that we want to get done in a very organized, predictable, open way that we can, and so I think that, that's just, I just, I just think as a hire, I'm always thinking of better processes, you know, just like a whole street maintenance fee, I think the, the better process should be sought.
Okay. Councilor Waterman.
My Bike and Ped and Library Committees are in the beginnings of the month, so I did not attend, there weren't any between last meeting and now. We do have a, a potential applicant for the Bike and Ped Committee. They're going to be attending the next meeting to observe as a prospective member. The chamber meeting was, was interesting. AI is here to stay, it's not going anywhere. It's going to be hard to not be involved in it without being left behind, more or less. So it's a good presentation that Ray put on, and that's all I have for now.
All right. Thank you. City Administrator Business Staff Force, Ms. Stein.
So you have in your packet the council goals, just wanted to update you on several of them. The SDCs, of course, you had the Part One and Part Two work session that was held in March, so gave direction to the consultant on that. You had finalizing the urban renewal district expenses and projects, so tonight was a work session or urban renewal agency. So we have marching orders on that. Conducting an assessment of the future city staffing needs. So what I had put in here before was that in terms of future city staffing needs, police identified three FTE in order to go to full 24/7 service, park, code enforcement, one FTE, public works, three FTE, fleet, one FTE, and procurement, one FTE. And I said that these would all be considered during the FY 25/26 budget process. Given the status of the budget, I'm not going to be including any of these in the fiscal year 25/26 budget. I just can't see how we can afford those positions this year, this next year. Recruiting a hotel and motel for Canby, we had discussion at your 319 meeting, and staff is following up on the suggestions that were given at that meeting. Establish a task force to determine the level of street maintenance, so we had that discussion, we just had that discussion. And presenting Pine Street, or present an evaluation of county roads in the current city limits and urban growth boundary. So you gave direction, I don't remember which meeting was, but you consented to allowing Jerry to go ahead and work with Clackamas County on, on an IGA for that.
Right, they're giving us thirty thousand dollars, right? Is that the deal?
I think it was five hundred thousand.
Oh, five hundred thousand?
Five hundred thousand.
Oh, that's way more than I thought, okay. Sorry.
Next week, at your next regular meeting, Jamie will be presenting the communications plan, which she's been working on for some time, which addresses this strategy for increasing youth engagement in local government, strategy for increasing diversity and citizen engagement in local government and developing, oh, and developing the communications plan. Also on 416, at your work session, you are scheduled to have a work session on your council operating goals and updates, goals and policies, excuse me, and that's it.
Any questions, your comments on that?
No.
Any other updates, Eileen?
No.
Okay. Next opportunity for.
Just, just a question, and you mentioned the three million dollar budgets shortfall. I don't want to go too much into that, but I, maybe for the people listening in the, in the, in the audience, just a brief, we're supposed to be running out of money this year or next year, or when is that happening currently?
Well, we.
Sorry to ambush you on that, but I thought to myself, if we're talking about it, maybe we should make sure.
Yeah, we're still preparing the budget. We're still preparing the budget.
So that's not an immediate thing, that's just something projected for, I'm just going off my memory, but I just want to make sure that.
I couldn't tell you yet.
Okay.
You know, what we're trying to do is save nickels and pennies and, you know, scrap as much as we can this fiscal year so we have more fund balance to start next fiscal year with.
Okay, so we'll, we'll be here anymore without, in the budget process? Okay, sorry.
No, no problem.
But I think I just did.
Okay, next opportunity for citizen input? Nope. All right. No input. Action Review, Maya, hi, how are you? You've been quiet over there tonight.
You have approved the consent agenda and approved ordinance 1641 to a second reading on April 16, 2025. And there was discussion for both the street maintenance fee and the Maple Street Park improvements. I believe there was consensus to bring back or bring forward the Maple Street Park improvements.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Engineering. The engineering. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Great. Before I take a motion to adjourn, I actually need a motion to go into executive session because that is next for the council this evening.
Mr. Mayor, move we go into executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660, parent two, parent D, to conduct deliberations with persons.
six zero, parent two, parent D, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Jason, I was going to say we need a second. Okay, it's been moved, uh, by Council President Henley and seconded by, uh, Council, Councilor Patton, uh, to move into executive session under ORS one nine-two dot six six zero, parent two, parent D, uh, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we are going into executive session. The Canby City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS, uh, one nine-two dot six six zero, parent two, parent D, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. Representative of the news media and council authorized staff members may attend the executive session. Members of the media are specifically directed not to report on the topics discussed and the discussions that occurred during the executive session. City councilors are similarly reminded not to discuss executive session topics and deliberations with any third party. This includes, without limitation, family members, other appointed officials, uh, city staff and volunteers, members of the public and members of the media. No decision may be made in executive session. If a final decision on the matter is necessary, the council will make that decision when it is in regular session. At the end of the session, there will be no further business and we will move to adjourn. Any questions? Great. Canby, good night. We'll see you in two weeks.